The responsibility. Budget is fine.
Thank you, I know. Yeah, big time. Big time. We have assistant calculators.
You ready?
Ready.
Is he ready?
Are we ready?
Hi, it's excellent.
Okay. All right, the date's October fourteenth, twenty twenty four, the time is nine oh four A M. We will call the budget retreat to order. Let's start with Devon, we'll go all the way around the table saying who's here and then we're gonna head up the back too, so.
Devon Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer, City of Durango.
Jose Madrigal, City Manager.
Elliot Pitts, Budget Manager.
Mary Catherine Moore, Budget Analyst.
Hey, Mark, City Clerk.
Mark Morgan, City Attorney.
Luke Alvey Henderson, Library Director.
Dave Woodruff, Toronto City Council.
Yoni Yoffe, City Council.
Erin Heider, Assistant City Manager.
Jessica Buell, Mayor.
Olivia Wosman, City Councilor.
Bonnie Fling, H R Director.
Tony McCarry, Airport Director.
Sarah Hill, Transportation Director.
Melissa Uso, City Council.
And then let's start soon.
Bob Bremer, Assistant City Manager.
Ellie Schmidt, Parks Recreation Commissioner.
Katie Fox, Nine One One Director.
Bob Lowery, Interim Public Works Director.
Jessica Carlton, Banking Director.
Nate Johnson, Public Information Specialist.
Ons Lu, Public Information Officer.
Bryce Carr, Chief Leader.
Catherine Leng, Strategy and Performance.
Anthony Nixon, Community Engagement Specialist.
Excellent, we will turn it over to Devon, he's gonna run the show.
Hey, great, well, good morning, Mayor, Council. We are here today to talk about the twenty twenty five City Managers' proposed budget. I did wanna highlight, since the mayor called out that amazing photo. We did a budget photo contest this year as we did last year. What was really exciting about this year's budget contest is the amount of engagement that we had on the connect and engage. So this is an opportunity for folks to, one, submit photos, which this was our winning candidate. But two, they have the ability to then maybe take a little get engaged with it and it's just another opportunity of creative public engagement that we partnered with Clancy on and so just wanted to highlight that as we proceed.
Thank you. May I play?
I should just like to advance.
Okay. Mayor and Council, I'll go ahead and kick off a little bit of the beginning of the budget presentation and then hand it over to Devon and as well as our E L T members. So we continue on our financial journey of excellence, but I think most importantly, as we look at values, we look at teamwork and professionalism and with our executive leadership team now, you will see as our budget is put under goals, we will actually have a representative of each one of those goals doing the budget, even though it's their department may have some of it. They'll actually be doing the presentation for the other departments that are underneath it as well. So just wanna give a thank you to our E L T members as well as the finance staff for their hard work in putting all of this together. Definitely lots of days, lots of months, lots of hours, putting all this together for you. Just put a slide in here on the retreat ground rules, these are just the ground rules that we've used previously. Sometimes it's just good to just have a little part in that as just a reminder as we go through it that we will try to answer all the questions that are proposed to us if we don't have the answer today, we definitely will follow back up later. Our outline will do the budget introduction. As you can see, we have our different strategic goals on there, so each one of those will have a budget presentation for them. Then we'll talk a little bit with lodgers tax and with community support funding and the five-year capital improvement projects, but summaries. Our approach this year has definitely been different than from some of our other approaches. Looking at where we are revenue-wise and things that were coming on board, we definitely wanted to focus on what I would call kind of the belt and suspenders of our budgets. If we look at the general fund, we did not add but maybe one, two positions tops. One of those was offset by fees and revenues. What we have done also, what you'll see in this, is we've already set aside if the two thousand five sales tax reauthorization were to pass, we've already set aside in this budget the nine hundred thousand dollar payment that the general fund would have to contribute onto it. So that kind of answers some of those questions that we've got is where would it come from? We do some of the increased revenues that we are projecting as well as just some cost savings that we've looked into with each one of our budgets. We plan on using that funding as proposed to continue on with some modifications and some redevelopment of those two buildings already, just so we can start getting work on it. But that is something we've already taken part of and held within our budget. We thought it was important to already show the community as well as the council that we were able to come up with that funding. We'll continue to advance our initiatives, our outline, the strategic plan, continue to look at finding ways in which we can address some of the community needs based on the feedback that we've received. Also continuing our journey of performance excellence, which is based on best practices of both the public and private sector, as well as continuing to invest in our workforce, which has been really important in our budget. We do continue with the three percent cost of living adjustment as well as the two percent high performer that is also included in this budget, as well as there will be no increased costs to our workforce for their health insurance premiums. With our ability and our financial excellence, we have been able to write our self-insurance fund. That was one that we had taken a look at that was audited and known that it was kind of coming to a part of the fund balance was low. With our new changes and ability to become more consumer-driven with our workforce, we've been able to rectify that and that now has been able to help us offset some of the health cost increases to our workforce. Just some successful fiscal initiatives that the council has been able to undertake. It's important that while staff, we do bring some very, what we consider some really good professional recommendations. It's the council and the decisions that each of you all make that really make the organization continue to move through. You can see about the two key strategic initiatives, the funding for the housing innovation and purchasing the police to city hall building, utilizing the opportunity fund in the general fund. The self-insurance, which we talked, we switched to the employee per month model. So the fund balance went from the one hundred eighty-two thousand in twenty twenty-two audit finding to four million. So we're able now to not have to worry about the end of the year of any catastrophic costs come in or incur the cost that we must incur. We have that ability to to take that on. Our capital projects that are included in this budget are either at the design stage or at ninety percent design completion to include the most accurate budget. Another shift as we continue to look at our capital improvement project process and how do we get more timely information but as well as complete the projects. Bidding for capital construction projects that align with the traditional construction season now will occur in the fall for twenty twenty-four construction in twenty twenty-five that aligns best with contractor schedules. So getting ahead of it, getting on their on their timeframe and their timeline so that we're not behind the curve coming going into the next year. The airport is gonna begin progress on phase one B with a twenty-six million dollar project expense. It's also good to show that the financial wherewithal that the airport has done under Tony's leadership, that this project will be funded through airport revenues and not taxes from the city or the county. And then the E P C has saved over three hundred and twenty thousand kilowatt hours, which is thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars, and reduced two hundred and ten metric tons of C O two. So all of those accomplishments are really with the help of the council and the guidance and your support. And I think it's always good to, as we move into a budget, to really take a look at some of those successful fiscal initiatives that we've been able to achieve. And I'll hand it over to Devon.
Awesome, thank you, Jose. So kicking off, I'd just like to highlight some of our strategic focus on enhancing our workforce competitive competitiveness through some of the partnerships, but also through wages, benefits and incentives as far as our, as part of our ongoing compensation study. Bonnie Fling will talk a little bit more about this when we get to that goal area, but just as a highlight, since personnel is a large portion of the budget, I did wanna cover some areas there. So we, as Jose mentioned, we are continuing that three percent cost of living and the two percent high performer. Also, all full-time employees are now earning a livable wage, which is reflective of a commitment to support, a supportive work environment, as well as the referral programs, which encourages our staff to help us find new talent that might want to come work for the city of Durango. The quarterly wellness incentive was a shift that was made in twenty twenty-four. Will continue in twenty twenty-five and that we've seen some good successes out of that. For folks participating in the health savings account or the high deductible insurance plan, we are contributing five hundred dollars for individuals and a thousand dollars for families. Our tuition assistance program has seen a six percent increase in utilization compared to twenty twenty-three, which is a great opportunity for our employees and the commitment for development lifelong learning. So I think that's a great opportunity, as well as the folks that we have participating in the internship and the mentorship program. So that gives us the ability to align and have the next generation of city folks learn and have those processes in place. In twenty twenty-four, our volunteer program successfully facilitated a hundred and forty-four hours of paid volunteer time, which really encourages our employees to engage in the community and give back. And finally, we are enhancing the recruitment, or we've enhanced the recruitment process so much that it only takes thirty-five days to recruit. Industry average is closer to sixty-seven. And so that's a great component there that we have some really good folks that we'd like to add to the city employees that we are quickly getting them on board and that translates into the services for the community. So great opportunities there. I wanted to take the opportunity, since Jose touched on it, but it's a little bit different the way we're doing the retreat this year. And this is as we continue to really move towards and pivot towards that budgeting for outcomes model. I did wanna share just two important budgeting methodologies that are included in this twenty twenty-five budget. We're not at a full budgeting for outcomes. Our capital plan is, however, our operating is not quite yet there. But first, when we were looking at budgeting for outcomes, this approach really looks at aligning our resources directly with the results we aim to achieve. So organizing our budget at a service level, we're able to ensure that every dollar is tied to a city's prioritized result or outcome, which points us back to that strategic plan. So this method helps with transparency. It's focusing on our efforts to show measurable impacts that directly benefit the community and it also allows us to evaluate how well we're achieving our goals and and how we can make better informed decisions about resource allocation to maximize that effectiveness. And then secondly, this is included and this has been a process that we've been utilizing for quite a few years now is the zero-based budgeting. So unlike traditional budgeting, which often relies on the previous year's budget, zero-based budgeting requires a fresh evaluation of every expense. So when the departments receive their budget kickoff information, they're looking at zeros in every single cop center object and column there. So this really allows each program and service to justify its funding. This process definitely encourages efficiency as well as the ability to assess expenditures. So instead of just having those carry over every single year, they're taking a fresh start to the budget every single year. So by implementing these two methodologies, we can certainly better align our resources and align those with our community's priorities, just ensuring that every dollar spent really contributes to meaningful outcomes for the community. So looking at our revenue forecasts, wanted to kind of provide a high-level piece here under some of our revenue forecasts. And I did print these out for council too, if they're a little bit small. But annually, the sales tax is forecasted to have a one point seven increase over twenty twenty-four. Sales tax is the largest bucket of funding, representing a forty-five point four percent of total revenue in the city, excluding grant revenue, enterprise funds revenue, debt proceeds and any intergovernmental revenue. In October, on this slide, October through December are forecasted, but just wanted to provide that sales tax revenue forecast as we look at the budget picture. Looking at the general fund, sales tax, we have that forecasted to have an eight percent increase over twenty twenty-four. April through June have the largest variance in twenty twenty-four and again, October through December are forecasted in this slide. Some near-term focus areas that we wanted council to be aware of as we're working our way through twenty twenty-five and the future. One of those is the transportation fund. So we do have some critical challenges that are facing Durango Transit and really the ability to provide reliable transportation services for our community. So like many transit agencies across the nation, Durango relies heavily on grant funding. However, we're currently operating with a negative net revenue, which means we are drawing our fund balance to sustain operations. Unfortunately, if we don't take action, our fund balance is projected to go negative by twenty twenty-six. Should this happen, we would need to implement service reductions, which would rely on our ability to meet the needs of the community and those transportation that folks so heavily rely on. To prevent this, it's certainly imperative that we look at a continuous revenue source and a funding solution that is sustainable for transit operations. And so just a little bit of history about kind of how we how we got here. Twenty twenty-three was particularly challenging for us in that we experienced abnormally low net revenue and delays in the transit operating grants throughout the year. Fortunately for twenty twenty-four, C dot did not require a local match because of these delays, but we're still have not received a full reimbursement on our expenditures. Additionally, the city is looking at a sale of real estate and if finalized could certainly provide some much-needed financial relief and extend our operations, you know, kind of extending out that cliff effect, but that cliff effect will still exist in the future. So just wanted to kind of provide that component for council and then.
Go ahead, you're going then.
And then just give a history of the transit funding discussions that have occurred. And so March twenty twenty sixteen, staff presented a variety of options for funding for transit. In twenty twenty seventeen, Transportation Commission developed a grant formula that reduced Durango's grant amount by eight hundred thousand annually. Twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, M A V or the Multi-Mobile Advisory Board made funding recommendations to council. C dot created a five-year transition plan for grant reduction, service reductions were implemented in COVID, but COVID funding generated additional revenue to sustain transit. September ninth of twenty twenty-two, staff presented some long-term funding options at a study session. In August of twenty twenty-two, M A V updated recommendations for transit funding and those recommendations included a sales tax or the two thousand five reauthorization with a quarter cent dedicated to transit, potential fees and expanding parking enforcement. Twenty twenty-one, lodger's tax increased dedicating approximately seven hundred K to transit annually. And in October, October seventeenth of twenty-two, council directed staff to pursue a scenario of the two thousand five reauthorization. And then in June of twenty twenty-three, staff prepared scenarios where the two thousand five reauthorization was dedicated to transit and showed the presentation of service cuts that would be required in twenty-six if funding wasn't identified. And then council did redirect the authorization of the O five towards parks, open space and trails and facilities. So just wanted to provide some history of some areas and these are kind of a synopsis of those previous funding recommendations. Ones that I didn't touch on was the marijuana tax increase and then some fees with linkage of impact fees, public-private partnerships for mixed-use building and parking structure, unoccupied building fees and an unimproved fee lot. So again, with the sale of the real estate, it should extend that cliff effect, should that occur, but certainly wanted council to be aware of one of the areas that staff is very focused on as we look at our financial picture for the city. And I'll pause for a second and give Sarah any opportunity to say anything if she'd like to, or Jose.
I'll just start with, obviously, this has been one that we've talked about and trying to find what's that sustainable source of revenue that we can have for for our transit system. I do think there's probably going to be some ability, maybe with lodger's tax, with Mike French coming on board, looking at bringing kind of the prosperity side of economic development, tourism, as well as housing together, understanding that transit is also a very key portion of that. Looking with some of the changes that's happening with visit Durango and the structure of tourism coming in, I do believe in the next nine months, Mike will be in a position of maybe provide some updated suggestions for our recommendations for the council on maybe how lodger's tax could be utilized for the affordability side of our population in our community and taking a look at maybe some ways that we could find some other funding for transit. So it's something we continue to look at, which is not something that staff is just like, oh, well, we don't have it right now. But wanting to also make sure that that the public is aware and obviously the council will be aware that we've had talks about this. We have discussed it, we've had several retreats in where we've discussed it. Transit and stormwater out of all of those things still have not quite found or identified that sustainable level of funding, so we will continue to keep moving forward and finding some areas for that.
Yes, and as as a bit of an appetizer or spoiler alert, however you wanna call that, Bob Lowery will be coming to the study session in November to talk about different funding strategies for storm drainage, as well as, you know, looking for the second meeting in November for for council approval to move forward with some opportunities there. But wanted council to be aware, you know, we've corrected a lot of areas as we've discussed in our financial initiatives. You know, the general fund at one point, I know when Jose got here had, didn't even have a twenty-five percent fund balance. And so we really worked to correct a lot of the financial initiatives, but these are two that staff is pretty focused on and wanted council to be aware, because it's obviously a large partnership as we move forward and looking for funding recommendations on these two areas. So just wanted to kind of highlight those.
On this one, just to make sure that the second meeting in November for council approval would be just approving a strategy, try again, approving a strategy to move forward and getting community support if possible for storm drainage. So it wouldn't be on that second meeting in November, the council approving a funding stream or anything of that part. It would be an approach to getting to a possible recommendation to the council later on, probably in twenty twenty-five, where there might be some areas to go through, but it really is setting up a work group of different sectors in our community, going, having staff meeting with them, talking about the need for stormwater drainage and see where they're at and seeing if we can grab support from them. And then also working with F A T on that as well and kind of having two parallel abilities so that somewhere in twenty twenty-five, we could have a recommendation at council based off of what we receive from the different ratepayers that are gonna normally be your higher fee users, which is gonna be your shopping centers, your churches. So we have Chamber of Commerce and then also a recommendation from F A T from the financial aspect of a possible new fee for stormwater drainage. But November is just, here's a possible approach we can go through that Bob will present to the council and then we would look at getting direction from the council of saying, yes, we like this approach to go forward. And staff go forward and come back with some recommendations at a later time.
Before I, we start diving into our operational budget by strategic planning layer, I wanted to take a moment to pause and answer any questions of council that have been presented thus far.
Thank you, you've been very clear so far. So I'm curious, okay, so is it possible to add a transportation budget inquiry back to the two thousand five reauthorization that is going forward this next year?
If that's what the council wanted to do, it is possible. There would be a lot of work that we would need from a staff perspective, I think, to kind of flush through some of those funding abilities. I think if we did the two thousand five, at that point, we'd probably be looking at an increase, not a reauthorization, which then would change the optics of that whole campaign side of it. But it's something from a staff perspective, is it possible? Yes. Does it have some hurdles? Absolutely.
I think that's why we decided not to do the transit part, because we didn't wanna do the increase when we were discussing this council. Reauthorization.
Yeah, I mean, it was something that was talked about, the timelines, there was different councils that had different approaches and feedback within it. I think where we were kind of leaning towards, and this wasn't a direction given by council, just kind of hearing from things was probably identifying lodger's tax as possible, this area for transit and housing and this kind of affordability side. So that's, I think, where it was maybe had the most support, but I can't say that that had support from the majority of the council, just kind of hearing the comments back and forth in some of these retreats.
Did we, do we have a date on the closing of the property that potentially will help transit?
I think, I'm gonna mark if I'm wrong, Bob Bremer checked in with Jim and it seems that the train is ready. Eminence, I think, is where they were going to have the funds available based on the direction we received from council. So I'm hoping, did he give you a timeline on?
There's some meetings this week and the timeline will come up.
I'm hoping by the end of the year, it seems by the end of twenty twenty-four, yeah, we can get that taken care of.
And then the money that C dot owes us in back payments from twenty twenty-two, is that the year it was, twenty?
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. Is there a timeline for getting reimbursed for that?
Yeah, they're monthly rolling reimbursements, so we just haven't been fully reimbursed for the full year. There's a few administrative delays that we've experienced, but it should be by the end of this year.
Okay, so potentially by the end of the year, we could have the real estate and that back payment. And so have a better idea as when that cliff is at the moment. I know in the county meeting, I brought up some transit concerns with like different county included routes that we've been asked about and they said that, was it the cog or Region Nine was talking about? Transit?
I think they're referring to the, yeah, the Regional Transit Council.
Okay.
They've had, you know, kind of some really, really high-level conversations about some type of coordination, but there isn't really a movement in any real way.
But there's a group potentially advocating.
There's a Regional Transit Council, yeah, that's a meetup of transit providers from our side, County Transportation Plan.
Okay.
Also on transportation, when you, there was one of the bullet points regarding parking enforcement on weekends and nights, are we not currently doing that?
Weekends and nights are free.
Free all the time. Okay, that'd be interesting to explore.
I think there's a lot of opportunities there and to take a look at and we're continuing to work on it. I think what we've also seen is for probably Melissa, since the tenure, when, you know, when we first got here, our transit service in our systems weren't as robust as they are now. We've added new routes. Sarah's done a great job with adding some microtransit, some other programs that are on there. So we are, we've developed a bit of a more robust transportation system, which I think the community has really supported and thrived on and wants more. So what we're really looking at as a, is a funding stream that can maintain this level, this current level that web services that we're providing so that we don't have to, when was that, that they reduced, what year?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, when they had to make a lot of reductions into the transit services. So we wanna kind of continue on it, I think we still have some, we'll have some time, especially with the the payment for the transaction on the train parking lot. However, it is something that we probably should in twenty twenty-five start really having discussions in regards to what is that source of funding.
It's interesting, but especially the week, weekend days, I think that's normal in cities. And they're very good at it during the week, yeah, but they are on that ticket stuff. So it will be interesting to explore, you know, what kind of revenue might be able to be generated from adding the staff to do that on the weekends and what the net revenue would be after that. So just the exploration, because I do think that's a normal thing that people play when they go to cities to 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 park on a Saturday or Sunday and shop or whatever, so just something to consider.
Sure.
Kind of jumping on the regional transportation authority conversation. You know, if the library district does pass, you know, there's an opportunity maybe to look at joint sales tax to see if that could be an opportunity for both the county, no?
I mean, we can explore whatever we want, I just.
Well, probably too many housing and transit, I mean, those are both very like-minded goals between the county and the city, so. I don't know. I know that they have budgetary shortfalls, but.
Yeah.
That's something we can align on, I don't know.
And I had a different question as well. I think that this will be the time to bring it up regarding the cost of living adjustments. I was curious what our cost of living adjustments were the last couple of years. And if I could kind of get that information for the just the last couple. And also if the three percent is the norm for other municipalities, kind of what people, what other municipalities are looking at.
So in. So in twenty twenty, when I got here. It was a three percent with a cap of, uh. It was three percent or three thousand dollars. So like if you're over a hundred thousand dollars, you weren't gonna get more. So it's three percent that year. And then. Every other year after that has been, uh, three plus two.
Three, three plus two.
Three percent cost of living and then for those who are high performers, add an additional two percent.
It's all, it's been three percent for the last several years.
Yes, since I've been here, every budget.
Okay, good.
At the minimum.
And, and, um. Is that kind of what you're seeing across the board for other municipalities?
It ranges, it just depends, uh, I haven't. I haven't said, like, I haven't looked at other municipalities of, of where they're at. I've just had conversations.
Yeah.
Uh, some are in our areas, some, uh, depending on their budget constraints, aren't getting, uh, adjustments. Uh, we are usually, I believe, higher than where the county is. If that helps, so not in comparison, our, uh, annual adjustments are going to be more than theirs. Uh, now, on those adjustments, I will say. That for public safety, uh, our PD officers, they're on a step plan. Uh, so every year they get a step, so they're a little bit different. So the, the three and the two percent doesn't go towards them. They have a step plan that they've already agreed upon. Which is an increase of.
Three and a half percent if they made your step and they can get accelerated step.
So. I guess the best comparison probably would be the county, uh, and we are giving higher increases annually than they are at this time.
Do you know what? It varies year to year. Um, there are certainly times where it would be, um, half of a percentage or percentage, but it, it definitely varies year to year.
Okay.
And I think, um, you know, in twenty twenty, um, employees, uh, were furloughed. Um, and there was that as we, if we look back that far, um, and I know under, um. Jose's leadership, it has been that, you know, we won't do that. We want to invest in our workforce and, um, so I think that's been a. Critical component as we're looking at the budget. That's certainly one of the first areas that, uh. We look to put in first is that three percent with the two percent for those high performers. And so. Um, from there, we figure out how to balance based off of maintaining those components.
So that's, that's kind of the goal number one with inflation and everything else to try to make that, uh, that difference in ways, which I totally respect. And so we're talking about a three percent cost of living to plus potentially up to two, uh, for mayor, uh, performance, correct?
Yes.
And then we're talking about adding, you said one to two employees.
I think it's the.
Across the board.
In the general fund.
In the general.
Yeah, if you're in the general fund, yes, if you're an enterprise fund, uh, it's based on their financial condition. So we will let enterprise fund level. Uh, positions being added. Uh, put it into the general fund. I think it was two. I know one was developed in services, but that. While it's being added is being offset by the fee increases, uh, that were passed by the city council. Uh, this past year or so, or this year. So that's kind of like an offset. It really wasn't a new, they had another one. And I think. There was just one other.
Get there. Sorry about that. And Bonnie will take us through, uh, those.
I could chime in here a little bit, uh, you know, through, uh, Colorado mun- municipal leagues, there has been some chatter on, uh. Uh, merit or proposed cost of living increases, um, and out of some nineteen, uh, uh, other. Organizations that have reported everywhere, the average is about a three percent cost of living and a three percent merit.
Great, okay.
And I was looking federally this weekend and federally over the last four years, it's a five point one percent increase. On like the federal level, uh, average, I just averaged all the.
I hope we're at least keeping pace.
We're keeping pace, uh, we are definitely keeping pace, um, and. Things to go with it that are, are what I would call soft. Uh, but they still soft costs, but they impact your financial, uh, pocket, right? So the cost of living adjustment's giving at five percent. Then you really have to take a look at, well, what was their health insurance premium increase, right? Because if that was. Four percent and they're getting five percent, well, really all they're getting really is one percent. So in some of that percent, but the whole entire workforce isn't going to see a health insurance increase on them. So. That is true, it's an increase in their compensation, right? Instead of. The part where people will come back and say, yeah, I got a three percent cost of living, but. My health insurance went up and still actually having to lose money on this. So we've been able to do things. Yeah.
Good. Yeah, um, oh, no, go ahead.
Well, it's associated with personnel. What is, where can I find in the budget, the total? Citywide cost for personnel, because I don't, I didn't see this.
Um, so I'd have to, we'd have to pull that page for you and maybe that's something Elliot and Mary Catherine can.
Is it specifically mentioned in this budget? Because I, uh, I'm seeing by department, but I don't see the citywide numbers.
Yeah, so we do, um, and later on, uh, Bonnie will talk about just the total FTE headcount. Um, and what that looks like, um, as part of her presentation, um. But as far as personnel costs, we typically have a chart, um, in one of our beginning slides. Um, that does reflect, you know, what does that cost by personnel? Um, and that's one of.
High chart. Just the one you mean?
Yes, typically we do have that component. It's.
It's not in this budget.
It's not, okay. Well, uh, we can certainly pull that, yeah. There are certain ways within open go, and that's the beauty of the online budget is that you're able to go in and you can change it to either be by. Um, types or you can change it. So you can pivot it. If you don't want to look at it at a department level, you could change it to look at it by. Personnel, charges and services, materials, supplies, capital. And so you can see, um, that whole component within, um, the online budget book.
Those are all, are all really, um, good initial questions. So my question is back to the pay increases, the merit increases. Now I'm wondering, does everybody get that? Uh, because you know, this past year, we've seen quite a few. Uh, mishaps that happen in the public with some of our programming, you know, say with the mini round. You know. So even though. Some of the departments may, do they still get their? Merit increases or cost of living and all that, even when they make bad choices?
The cost of living adjustment, uh, at three percent is given to everyone. Uh, so that one is something that all employees get, the three percent cost of living. The merit, uh, is at a, a portion of it that your high performers really are about a third of your workforce, right? It's not something that everyone can get to two percent. So we don't budget at two percent. And at that part, it's up to the, it's at the discretion of the department director. Of who they see in their department to get that merit increase of the extra two percent.
Any other questions?
All right. Great. Well, I will take us through our first goal area, um, which is organizational stewardship. So I'll run through quickly. Um, the objectives that are listed in here. Um, so one point one is. Financially sustainable and innovation led framework that thrives on building effective partnerships. To alleviate city costs. Harness the power of technology for efficiency. One point two is to foster a strong community group. Partnerships through effective communication and commitment to diversity, equity. Inclusivity efforts while focusing on increased accessible. Accessibility of services for underserved communities. And one point three is to advance a systematic approach. For environmental sustainability through focused efforts to conserve resources and mitigate environmental stressors. By meeting or exceeding local and state national standards. So as we're looking at organizational stewardship, um, and the departments that exist within this goal area, we have the city manager. City attorney, finance, customer service, information technology, community support services. Buildings, performance excellence, general services, vehicle equipment and service fleet. Um, sustainability programs and non-departmental. So diving in and looking at some of those, um, sources of funding is or how that funding is broken out by each department, um. You can see within the general fund, uh, we have about twelve point seven million in our internal services funds. We have eight point three million. And our total in all funds, um, comes to twenty-one million. Um, wanted to take an opportunity to share with council, um. As we look ahead into twenty twenty-five, our priorities are strategically focused on several key initiatives that will enhance our operations. So. First, um, council has directed the reauthorization of the two thousand and five. Um, this funding sources for sustaining essential services for police facilities as well as the city halls. Uh, next we are committed as a city. And as an organization and implementing performance excellence by addressing our opportunities for improvement. Um, this will efficiency effectiveness across our operations and really ensure that we deliver the best possible services for our community. Uh, with the, uh, partnership that we're currently doing with the government finance officer association, which is, um. For our, our entire financial system. Um, this process involves, um, going through kind of what our current state is and looking at what our future state is. So what would we be able to do? We had. Uh, different financial system, how we'd be able to better serve the community and what opportunities is there? Um. This, uh, will certainly look at streamlining our financial processes and just improve our overall management. Another key priority, um, is the development of the performance excellence. Board, um, so this tool will provide a real-time insights into our organization's performance metrics. Um, which will enable us to track progress and make, um, data-driven decisions that will enhance our service delivery overall for the city. Um. In addition, we are dedicated to the distribution of the indigenous land acknowledgement materials, which would include signage at, um, trailheads. And this effort really reflects the commitment to recognizing and respecting the heritage, um, of the communities in our region. Conservation leaning and programmatic initiative. So with the just growing concerns about water resources, this initiative is crucial for promoting. Sustainable practices and ensuring that our community, um, is able to thrive in the long term. Electric vehicle replacements and maintenance, as well as training as and market availability improved. So this initiative. Supports our commitment to sustainability, but also positions us to reduce, um, carbon footprint and modern, modernize our. Specifically wanted to highlight some of the variances, um. As we're looking at this goal area, so starting with, uh, accounting, um. We did provide a, or finance or accounting, we are providing an increase in funding for professional development. Um, so that investment really enhances our, uh, retain and attract, uh, top talent within finance. In the city's attorney's office, uh, we are reflecting the need for an additional city attorney. So that was, um, one of the positions. Mission will look at, um, increasing bolstering our legal team, allowing us to manage those legal responsibilities. And act a increased contribution to the animal shelter. Um, this funding will help, um, them make sure. That they have the resources for animal care and welfare and our people and equipment service. Um, we are allocating funding for vehicle replacements. Um, we replaced sixty vehicles in. Twenty twenty-four. And with, um, some of those co- COVID impacts, um, that we're lingering, we are seeing an ability to replace our fleet vehicles. Which also does include, um, some shop increases, um, that are allocated out to the departments just for costs of, um, we're still seeing high maintenance costs and high. Costs to, um, replace and repair vehicles as far as the equipment goes. So, um, those are a couple, um, variances. Um, I've talked about a few of these, um, in buildings. I did want to cover just a reduction in credit card fees with their changes in our, um. Point of sale system as well as an ECH credit change. So that would allow the consumer to, um, tie their bank accounts so that they are not, uh. Utilizing a credit card when they're doing online fees. So that is something we're exploring as we're going through. Our sales tax meetings with contributing those fees. So, um, that's an opportunity. And then, um, in non-departmental, we did remove the, uh. Compensated absence, just to reduce any such a holdover there. Um, and the item that's listed is human services that is part of our, um, with the core contract, we have been seeing that the client's insurance has been. Paying for, um, any of those long-term core services that they are, um, provided. And so with that. We did reduce that budget in the event, um, the insurance of the client is not covering that. We could certainly bring back a mid-year adjustment. To increase that core services contract, but we just didn't want to hold budget and, um, for that purpose. So. I'll just keep on moving. In our non-general fund, um, in the BES, I talked about those shop rate increases, um, in our general services for building and. Um, we are looking to. Raise the, um, bay door so that we're able to bring the trash trucks into the, um. Actual service center. Right now, if we have a trash truck in a lot of, in a lot of cases, our mechanics are working outside on those trash trucks. So. We're looking for the ability to bring that inside so that. The, um, door can access those. And then in sustainability, um, it is a reduction, but there were quite a few one, um, did not. Carry forward or were not, um, being implemented in twenty twenty-five. So, um, staffing, um, areas, um, for the city manager's office, it is a shift of two, um, full-time employees, two performance X had. Um, the performance excellence initiatives with under, within the umbrella of finance, um, working through. Our performance excellence journey and, um, from the department, um, having, um, seems to make more sense from a, um. Completion of the most senior leadership. And so, um, that is a, a request to just move to personnel out of finance. Over to a performance excellence division, uh, under the city manager's office. Um, I've already talked about the city attorney with the addition of an assistant city attorney and then an IT, um, we are looking to. Shift, um, emergency telephone service agency funded position from the IT department to the nine-one-one communications fund. As the nine-one-one communications fund became its own fund in twenty twenty-four. Um, that was a request of the user agencies to have that as a separate fund and not just as part of the general fund. Um, that is a bigger change that, um, council will see throughout this budget is, um. Another shift we've made is the, we've brought the ETSA funding into the city coffers, um, and with that. Council will be able to see the changes, um, and anything that is ETSA funded. Where historically that has been a separate. Um. Revenue, you know, and separate expense within, um. The nine-one-one and manage through that board. So wanted to provide that component as well. And then just wanted to, uh, take an opportunity to highlight some key achievements, um, that are really through an innovation-led, um. Framework as well as our financial sustainability. So as we're looking, um, under the innovation-led framework, we've made some really significant strides. And, um, enhancing our organizational efficiency and responsiveness, responsiveness. Um, one notable accomplishment was, um, the addition of the assistant city manager position, um, with this role providing. And streamlining our operations to improve responsiveness to community needs. Um, we also introduced a housing and tourism officer to specifically oversee housing innovation, tourism operations. And this strategic moves allows us to focus on, uh, vital areas that really drive both community development and economic growth. Um, additionally, uh, we successfully updated the strategic plan, uh, with the partnership with council. Um, the tactical plan is underway and will be coming to council in January. Um, as well as a, uh, revamp to our mission and vision, um. These are really critical in guiding our initiatives as our guiding compass in the city and alignment with our long-term strategic goals. Our journey towards, um, difference excellence took a major step forward as we embarked on this process and we will be submitting our first application. Um. We effectively managed nine project teams, working diligently to, uh, meet those performance excellence initiatives. Milestones and showcasing our, um, efforts towards continuous improvement. Um, a site visit was conducted as part of this journey and that further demonstrates our dedication to implementing best practices and enhancing our organizational effectiveness. And as we look at our financial sustainability, um, we, as council knows, completed our annual comprehensive financial report on time without any findings. Um, this accomplishment certainly underscores our commitment to, uh, financial accountability in our financial operations. So. Um, we evaluated funding options for the city hall and the police department building renovation, um, which would lay the groundwork for potential twenty twenty-five valid initiative. And, um. Finally, uh, we upgraded our shop equipment, replaced, as I mentioned, over sixty vehicles, um, with a significant decrease in our backlog. Um, with a significant decrease in our backlog. Uh, this really helps our mechanics and our fleet folks um be able to focus on uh doing preventative maintenance. And not trying to maintain and repair um an aging fleet. So um those were some, some big, large components, and we also purchased Buckley Park. And the areas under um how we harness the power of technology. We did upgrade our I T infrastructure and reconfigured some of those storage um platforms. Which resulted in some um cost reductions. We developed a key performance indicator um dashboard and are testing that. Um, as I mentioned, in twenty twenty five, we will look to have a outward facing dashboard for all of our performance metrics data. Uh, we enhanced our cyber security program, which is another critical achievement. Um, this is really looking at the implementation and best practices and policies of software to protect our systems from data threats. Um, and as I mentioned, in collaboration with the government finance officers association, we did. Um, where we are in the process of assessing our current um financial system. We migrated to Durango co.gov domain. Um, which enhances the security and reproportability of our email system and websites. And as we look at our systematic approach towards sustainability, we did expand our e-bike rebate program and completed a greenhouse inventory. Um, these initiatives really reflect that commitment to reducing our environmental footprint. We implemented programs for organic waste management, um focusing on food waste sleeves, which contribute to the overall waste reduction. And um piloted a turf grass replacement program, which is aimed at outdoor water conservation. Um, which will help us with our water resources. Our um legal guidance, we did provide to ensure compliance with sustainability standards across those initiatives. Uh, we took a significant steps towards implementing a hybrid fleet in the police department, leading to um fuel savings. And so you'll see some reductions in the budget there around um fuel for the police department. Uh, additionally, we developed a zero emissions vehicle transition plan for Durango Transit. Um, positioning us to transition toward a cleaner transportation option. And finally, in our commitment um to diversity, equity, inclusion, um we established the indigenous land acknowledgement. Recognize the importance of honoring the land um and its original inhabitants. And we ensured that childcare bilingual access are available at all public meetings, making our process more inclusive for our community members. Um, additionally, as part of Chapman Hills Improvement Project, we are creating an access that will benefit a more diverse population. So furthering our commitment to those inclusivity efforts within our community. In twenty twenty five, what are we looking to accomplish? So, um, looking at where we're headed, um first, under harnessing the power of technology. We will update our webpages and forms to ensure that they are meeting the um Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. This commitment is to accessibility will enhance um some of our user experiences. Um, so that all community members can easily access our information. We will install um some A M I enhancement repeaters to improve our network performance. This is directly related to um our water meters. Additionally, we will leverage um asset management software and um the intent here is to improve our maintenance program. And this tool will help us manage our assets more effectively, enabling uh proactive maintenance and reducing costs. Um, in line with our evaluation process, we'll assist in um selecting the um new enterprise resource plan system. Based on what we go through in twenty twenty five for the request for proposals. Um, to secure, to further secure our operations, uh we will upgrade our backup recovery system to enhance our cybersecurity posture. But finally, in this section, we will um look to um streamline a more systematic approach. Um, towards sustainability and we will expand upon those water conservation planning initiatives. Um, we will also improve our data collection on resource consumption, sustainability metrics. By providing us with the insights needed to make informed decisions and track our progress. Um, we will capitalize on state and federal funding, which will support the various sustainability projects. Just maximizing their impacts and effectiveness. And we will determine um a fleet wide fuel, pursue those E V replacements and maintenance training. Um, as I mentioned prior, we will be looking at doing signage um for our I L A. And as far as our um fostering with our group partnerships, we, this budget does have one point four million. Um, in community support funding, which reflects those collaborative um efforts to support local initiatives. And finally, in twenty twenty five, the um police efforts will continue for the thirty by thirty initiative. Which is aiming to improve gender equality um in law enforcement and enhance diversity of our police force. Continuing with our twenty twenty five theme, um we, one of our primary deliverables will be to conduct um a performance. Excellence evaluation site visit um based on the application that we submit this fall. Uh, this will help us look for areas of strengths, but also some opportunities for improvement, ensuring we're um on a good path. Towards operational excellence. We will execute the tactical plan, um which will develop key performance indicators. And these um K P I's will again help us track process effectively to ensure um we are aligned with our strategic goals. As well as those budgetary resources. Um, and we'll manage our strategic milestones, um so we'll be looking to ensure that we are on track and achieve our objectives throughout the year. We will have um collaboration um with the departments um to develop those organizational measures. Um, and those will um come to council as part of that tactical plan for um adoption. And looking at our financial sustainability, um we are committed to completing the annual comprehensive financial report on time. And again, with no findings, um that'll be a goal, um, you know, forever. As we continue to move forward um with that. And so uh we will also look to do and continue with our transition for budgeting for outcomes. Uh, we won't look to do a full pivot with the programmatic and the um operational budgeting for outcomes. Until we are in twenty twenty six for the twenty twenty seven budget, so we want to get really um good and informed with our capital. Process around those budgeting for outcomes and then we'll look to shift that in twenty twenty seven. Um, we will also look to deploy a new purchasing policy, which will streamline our procurement processes. And enhance our operational efficiency. Um, that is internally, but also as we're working with our vendor partners in the area. That uh is something that we're excited about and accuracy metrics in their budgets. And this um will certainly have departments um having them plan carefully and monitor their expenditures as well as their revenues closely. Um, we will also design a cost allocation for citywide owned building maintenance, which will provide. Um, some additional um clarity and making sure that those resources are. Um, allocated efficiently. Um, also with our centralized warehouse functionality, we'll look to reduce any obsolete inventory in our warehouses. So before I kick it over to the next goal area, any questions that I can answer or any comments on organizational stewardship?
Okay, so you're gonna um migrate to a new system in twenty twenty six? So is that based upon the data from uh our current um budget for outcomes method?
So what we're looking at, um the system that we are currently on is called City Suite Harris. Um, we have been on that system. Gosh, we converted that from gems, which was an old, we've been on that system for probably two or three decades. Um, and that financial system manages all of our accounts payable. Um, we've shifted our H R I S system out of that, we've shifted the budget out of that. So what this is really looking at is our ability um for our internal departments. Um, to have a better system and a financial system moving forward. So we right now are defining kind of, here's our current state and what would it be if we had a new system for a future state? Um, so that would require uh budget impacts and so that would come back to council um once those R F Ps go out. For our budget allocation, um should we look to move for that? That's not included in the current budget because we haven't done the bidding for that project yet. We're still defining what we would like to see in our system. And this will include looking at our asset management systems. We are looking at our utility billing system um for our utility customers. So we're taking a very large look at all of our um systems that have a financial component related to them.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Just real quick, uh it's fairly minimal, but um I noticed we're doing more towards the animal shelter, the increased contribution. Did they ask for more or I know they asked for more last year? And so I want to know what that increase was and kind of what precipitated it.
So, uh while Devin is looking for that increase, if she can find it, I will kind of, it was twenty five thousand.
Okay.
Uh, we met Bob and I with the animal uh shelter director uh who is newly appointed. So there's a couple of divisions they have, they have like the uh animal control, which is their officers. And then they have the shelter management. On the officer's side, uh they are good, that part is properly funded. On the shelter operation side, uh they are not uh all the way funded, and so they will have. I mean, they have an increase all the way for like the next four years uh for us on the shelter operations. Um, they're doing the same thing from the county. So we had a great discussion, uh talked a little bit uh in regards to maybe a a funding plan moving forward. Uh, we'd be getting the entire county together. So that it's, because right now they're taking all the county, except it's just the county and Durango are the only entities being paid for it. So we're asking, you know, have you reached out to Bay Build, have you reached out to Ignacio? And have the rules been set that if you're outside that area, that we're not going to accept those animals? Uh, things to look into that part of it, I was on an animal control board way back in my early career. And those are some of the things that you had to do, otherwise it's always going to be on the city and the county. And the numbers that they were looking were pretty, but like maybe by the, by going up to almost like three hundred thousand, Bob?
It was more than that.
I mean, it was, it was big chunks and I, because Bob and I was like, I don't even know where we're going to get this money uh outside of, you know, cutting another department. Uh, so really asking them to take a look at their funding and their future and how they make it work in a way where we're all partners. And not just it always being found on the city and the county. So that's the increase, it's going to be on the shelter side, uh I expect that they will come back with more increases. I hope that in this year, uh as we go into twenty twenty five, they do look at a more of a regional approach and how we can get other entities involved. Uh, I'd say I'd be happy to help, Bob said be happy to help make those out outreach areas to do those types of discussions.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know that that was part of the conversation before is that some of the other municipalities weren't putting any money in, so just leveraging some of those other communities.
Yeah, and then unfortunately, or you know, some people are bringing dogs from Mexico. And but they live in Durango and they saw like a dog in Mexico and they brought them in and were like, that's. Increasing our cost, like if you're going to do it in Mexico, can you take them to the shelter to there? And so those are some of the things, a fifty percent decrease, but there needs to be some of these operational rules on it, otherwise uh we'll become the free shelter that everyone will take. And will have to end up uh paying for those increases.
And it was thirty one thousand, my apologies.
Thirty one?
Yeah, thank you.
From?
For the shelter, let me pull that up.
Sorry.
Oh, you're okay.
We did a substantial one last year.
Right.
And then we did another one this year.
Okay, I thought it was in the hundreds of thousands, if I remember right. You guys are going to see an uh an ordinance change in the next meeting or two to deal with animal control. It's not in a way that anything you're talking about, except that we're giving the municipal court the ability to streamline some of the process. Because we have some of them. So the judge suggested and we're implementing some changes to give the municipal courts and spend more time, you know, the streets.
Okay, cool.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, but it's kind of general.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's, I mentioned about budgeting to outcomes, um which I absolutely appreciate. I think it's great that we're, the whole process of setting these high level strategic goals and then budgeting to meet those goals. And so this council can really see where those funding funds, the money is going to, to meet those strategic goals. But in that process and with the changes that we've have seen now in my eighth year. Um, and the different presentation that this is presenting this year, just a question on, like I'm looking at Open Gov. Um, so I can see some trends of where we've been. I guess, uh, I guess Open Gov will become pretty important, I think, to see those trends. Um, if we're kind of do presenting it in this way, so we can see the high level totals. So we can see the breakdown, you know, just the, the combined. The sheet and come and expense statement all in one place. Um, so I guess my question becomes then, when will we add twenty twenty five proposed to Open Gov, do we think?
So twenty twenty five proposed, um the budget, the online budget book is live. And as we finalize this presentation, um the goal was to provide council with those goal areas. Explain some of the uh projects that we're looking to accomplish through those. Um, as we, the kind of the final wrap that we'll do today is I'll take you through all of those fund summaries in, through Open Gov. I think the challenge that we've had and we're trying to take the Open Gov data, put it on a PowerPoint. It's like size eight font and it makes it really hard for anyone to be able to see and follow along.
Right.
So that last, um one of the last slides I have in the presentation is to count, take counsel through each one of those fund summaries.
Okay.
Um, we probably won't touch on some of the smaller ones like the Storm Drainage Fund.
Uh huh, right.
Just uh for the sake of time, but we will take counsel through those, so you're able to see some of those changes um at a higher level. At a fund summary, so you're able to see total city combined fund balance and all of that, yes.
I'm not seeing that here.
And it is in the budget book, if you're on tab, fund summaries. So your fund summaries does have all of this, so this is still.
What section is that? Oh, here it is.
Yep, so if you start and it's uh, it starts on page fifty eight.
Okay.
Um, that's your combined and then it'll take you through each one of the general plan projections, all of the projections for this fund summaries. And we will cover that today.
Okay.
Um.
I think it's important to just have that high level.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Council going forward.
Yep.
Um, and then when will you get the twenty twenty four amended into Open Gov?
Have we posted the amended?
I see proposed, um, twenty twenty four proposed.
Transparency, yeah, it's been, it's been under it.
Okay.
Ready.
Perfect.
Just for some reason, I'm not seeing it under Open Gov, I see proposed for twenty twenty four, but anyway. That was something I was looking at, and then one other question is, when I'm looking at it, is there is a year over year. For revenues um tab that requires a password.
Okay.
And I feel like all of councils should have access to that password.
Yes, we can, we can take that piece off, that's a functionality within Open Gov when we're building the proposed budget. We need that ability to have um so that we're able to embed all of the charts on. The section that talks about the major revenue.
Yeah.
Um. But we have to put a password on it because we want to make sure you all receive it first, so we just need to take that password off. And maybe that's something Mary Catherine and Elliot can do right now.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Just kind of trying to get the high level.
Sure. Yes, yeah, and we'll certainly um cover that, we debated about whether or not we should start with that or end with that. Um, but you know, as we're continuing with this budgeting for outcomes, um.
Right.
Model for council, we thought it was important to highlight what the dollars are going for within each goal area and then bringing it back to that summary.
We could get stuck on that high level for the entire retreat, so it's probably good to do this first, I think.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Great, thank you, sorry for that.
No, no, that's okay, it is, it is a different style than we've done in the past, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the first one? Okay, number two.
Do, okay. All right, um, well, thank you, council. Uh, now we're going to present the innovative housing and economic development. And as I said earlier, I am the budget manager, I'm actually, I'm not operationally uh working in any of these divisions or departments. But I am very proud to be on the I H E team, we like to call ourselves. Um, and I'm filling in verbal structure and like French. Um, so first, two point one, um is. Cultivate innovative housing solutions and partnerships to advance development of a variety of housing options. To support a multi-generational and mixed income community by narrowing the gap between income levels and housing stability. Two point two, stimulate economic progress and resiliency through strategic collaboration. Two point two, stimulate economic progress and resiliency through strategic collaboration, nurturing entrepreneurship. Supporting business growth uh, through well-designed city service programs. Uh, and two point three, preserve and enhance the edge as an attractive community by engaging in community-driven planning. Strategic infrastructure. And partnerships between the public and private sectors. Um, so the departments and divisions that we have within the innovative housing and economic development goal area. Our innovative housing, development services, economic opportunity, Durango renewal partnership, also known as U R A and lauders tax. Um, and we will get into each of these. Uh, so just as we started with organizational stewardship, we're going through the source of funding for each of these. Uh, uh, for each, for this goal area. And that includes uh, the general fund for development services, economic opportunity, uh, the Durango Welcome Center, U R A. Um, and one major variance that we will talk about is that Durango Welcome Center. I do want to highlight that now, we will get into that in a little bit more detail, just a slide or two. Um, additionally, the lauders tax, uh, specifically the mo- lauders tax marketing. Um, and again, we will get into that in a little bit more detail, um, and that does relate to the Durango Welcome Center. Uh, housing innovation does have its own fund and you will see that uh, there are less expenses this year. Get the, into that into the major variances. And U R A, which doesn't have a whole lot of variance this year, other than the uh, percent change on the forecasted revenue expenses that we have. Um, so just as with organizational stewardship, we are starting with the twenty five priorities. So with innovative housing solutions, uh, the big goal that we're looking at is public-private partnerships, uh, critical grants. Um, we'd like to highlight that solutions in this area are not single threaded. Rental and ownership assistance will be required, so. Um, and so the big, the big goals that we're trying to accomplish here, uh, they're multifaceted and they're going to be a. A lot of different solutions that uh, will be brought to council, uh, but we're excited to work with you and, and make those presentations here. Um, for economic progress and resiliency, we have economic development services, entrepreneur support, incentive programs. And navigating city services, U R A tip funds and bilingual business navigators. So that we can be, so that we can continue to focus on that equity and inclusivity with our entire uh, uh, community. And for Durango's distinctive appeal, um, enhance service delivery, meet community expectations, community customer engagement efforts. And begin updates to the city's comprehensive plan and other planning documents. Um, so this will include development code and things like that, and I think you can expect to see it coming here. Um, so again, some of the major variances that we have is that we are bringing some of the services from, uh, previously provided by Visit Durango in-house. Uh, one of the bigger services that they did is the grant program and that will be managed um, through our community development. Um, department and division, uh, in addition, uh, two F T Es for tourism destination management. And then bringing the Welcome Center operations in-house. Uh, these have all previously been paid for out of the uh, Durango uh, mark, the lauders tax marketing bucket of funding. Um, specifically the, the entire bucket was paid to Visit Durango. Uh, with those services being brought in-house, uh, we won't be uh, sending the entire uh, marketing bucket of funding to Visit Durango anymore. How, and anything that we do bring in-house will still be paid out of that same bucket. So, um, there's not a whole, there's really not a lot of net change in what the city's paying. Um, instead of say, sending it out to an outside agency, we're just tailing those uh, services on in-house. Um, for the housing fund, the expiration of ARCA funds, um, as much as we wish that those uh, dollars would continue, they did have a timeline on them. And um, based on uh, outside counsel and auditor recommendation. We are anticipating spending down all of the ARCA funds by the end of twenty twenty four. Um, so we're very much looking forward to some accomplishments with those. And then uh, Open Gov permitting software, uh, for the permitting. That was uh, completed and implemented in twenty twenty four, so the implementation cost will not continue in twenty five. Um, and the ongoing costs are actually moving to the I T budgets as standard with uh, a lot of the software costs for the city. And then the building official position. Um, as Devon alluded to earlier, uh, we did have a building official position due to some staff changing and turnover. We ended up contracting the services uh, out for most of twenty twenty four. But we again are bringing that cost back in-house. And again, the uh, position is, is largely offset by the expense of the contract that we have. And next, uh, the expenses for the general fund, again, just want to touch on the Durango Welcome Center. Um, so that is an expense that is being brought in-house and in twenty twenty five will be paid out of that lauders tax market bucket. Um, and then the economic opportunity, you do see a large variance there. Um, that is mostly because of that Open Gov implementation and then uh, uh, change to the funding buckets and salaries. So, um, uh, we are changing a little bit on the allocation. One example is, uh, right now, the entire director position for community development is being charged to economic opportunity. Um, but to match uh, some of the uh, other funds and divisions that we have within the city, we're splitting those up. So that's why you see a large uh, decrease in expenses there, but the services are remaining the same. It's really just shifting funding. Uh, next, non-general fund. Um, again, uh, the biggest variance in the housing fund is that uh, ARCA funds are not continuing. And we expect to uh, expand all of those funds by twenty twenty four. And then for lauders tax, uh, it's really, if we add up all of those lauders tax budgets, it's really just a percent variation. On uh, how much revenue we expect to expend. Um, and, and the expenses, again, if they're being brought in-house, they just won't be uh, sent out to an outside agency like Visit Durango. Um, and next, staffing levels. Again, um, the community development position is that a building inspector position. Uh, which again is largely offset by the contract expenses that we have for, for that service. But there's, there will be no change in service there. Uh, in the housing innovation fund, uh, we will be bringing in a couple of positions in-house. Again, that is uh, part of the change for uh, for, from Visit Durango and bringing my French on. And it, and it's also related to the tourism marketing, uh, where that position, the cost will be split. Uh, between housing and tourism as they are related. Uh, but we expect the uh, work and the services to be seventy percent related to tourism. Uh, and thirty percent related to housing and some of the programs that they're doing, uh, house does already have staff. So this is, is mainly uh, administrative position to make sure that we can continue those services and. High level as the community expects. Uh, next, twenty twenty four strategic accomplishments. Uh, in the housing division, division, the updated fair share ordinance was completed. Housing compliance agreement with Twin Buttes was updated. Uh, partnership with the Home Fund and Housing Solutions has continued uh, to help with the rental assistance program. The residents at Durango Phase One, the seventy-two units was completed. Uh, leasing for locals programs to secure thirty multifamily uh, workforce units uh, in the Gage Partner Building. Uh, continues and uh, was implemented in twenty twenty four. And we acquired an income-qualified townhouse, um, that will be sold to, again, income-qualified people. Uh, with a deed restriction, so that that always uh, remains as, as affordable housing for the community.
Elliot, if I could just touch on that one, uh, that is the process we redid, uh, so if you were able to look. At the newspaper uh, on the, over this weekend, uh, you will see that uh, that process was totally revamped by Mike. And we have ten uh, income-qualified workforce uh, families. There are persons that are uh, on the list to be onto that house, representing all assets and factors of our sectors of our community. Uh, retail, education, uh, I think there's even health and then professional. So uh, really good to see going from just one to ten when we open it up and give it more time. So just a really good uh, showing of us being able to pivot, stop and, and get a better process going. Uh, that will be drawn on October twentieth. So you will expect to see in November, uh, the process to begin with the three readings of the ordinance. Uh, for the council to formally give that uh, property over to whoever was selected out of that double-blind drawing.
Uh, next, we have two point two, economic uh, progress and resiliency, several accomplishments. And I actually would just like to highlight something that is not on the slide right now. The reason I am filling in for Scott Hyde, Tommy Crosby and Mike French is that they are at the Economic Development Council Colorado Conference. Um, where Tommy is actually receiving a young professional award, um, literally as we speak. Congratulations to Tommy, we're very happy to work with him and the work that he's accomplished. Um, so speaking of that, um, in this full area, we have accomplished, uh, we have launched the economic development incentive policy. Facilitated sixty new grant partnerships, uh, joined state rural jumpstart zone program. Secured fifteen thousand dollars for the National League of Cities, partnered with Laclaw Food Equity Coalition. Again, to hire that bilingual business navigator, um, and had food business resource guide. Posted twenty twenty four downtown Colorado in conference. And we have the bump out program supported thirteen businesses. Uh, and we, as always, continue to monitor the U R A TIF, uh, to be dispersed through the community as those opportunities arise as well. And last, uh, twenty twenty four accomplishments, two point three, Durango's distinctive appeals. Uh, again, we have implemented the o- Open Gov permitting software for better ease of use for the community developers for the, for their permitting need. Um, we have updated building permit fees so that uh, the revenue is a little bit more sustainable. To make sure that we can continue those services and develop review roundtables, uh, which are in-person meetings with local development professionals. To make sure that we're hearing their voices and that we can adapt to their, their needs as it arise, arises, excuse me. And the L U D C code amendments, including the reconfiguration of boards and commissions uh, for simplification and clarification of permitting process. And the Durango Mesa Park annexation, uh, which was the eighteen hundred acres of land was annexed to the city for recreation and public uses. Um, and as you'll see, as we talk about the, and I do have already seen, as we talk about capital projects, um, there will be a lot more coming as that develops. And next, we have twenty five uh, strategic deliverables, so for two point one, innovative housing solutions. Uh, we're looking for permanent uh, funding options for workforce housing in partnership with the community organizations. So as we've talked about, uh, housing right now is largely uh, supported through the fund balance that they have. Um, a, a big portion of that was ARCA, which is ending, so we are exploring options to make that uh, sustainable funding. Um, we plan to expand and formalize the, the city's land banking program to support housing opportunities. Uh, we are beginning to work on a twin view site workforce modular housing project with elevation foundation, again, for workforce housing specifically. Um, and then we are beginning with the Westside Mobile Home Park Workforce Housing Project. Uh, facilitating next steps in the Durango cross in public-private partnership. And continue the leasing for locals program, uh, to review results for ongoing commitment. Next, for two point two, economic progress and resi- uh, resiliency. Um, really, the big focus is to focus on our core deliverables, um, including entrepreneurship board. Uh, incentive programs and navigating city, city services. Again, we want to make sure that we're responsive and adaptive to the needs of our, of our community, um, as we look at economic resiliency. Um, and then we're going to administer and streamline grant programs. And again, that does include uh, the grant programs that Visit Durango was previously running and we're preparing that in-house. Uh, and then we're gonna ensure transparent and admin- administration of U R A tip funds, um, as we have. Done this year and will continue to do in the, in the future. And for midtown safety and connectivity plan, uh, we plan to promote a safe development and enhanced economic growth. And lastly, for uh, two point three, Durango's distinctive appeal. Um, we will continue, uh, the deployment of Open Gov, we'll monitor its success in its first, um, uh, year and a half of that implementation. And respond to any kind of developer uh, feedback to make sure that it, the implementation is going well and, and make any updates that we need. Um, again, we will look at the land use and development code amendments, uh, to ensure that the standards are up to date, active to current community needs. Uh, review and begin updates to the city's comprehensive plan and other planning documents. Uh, we will continue to look for Durango Mesa Park infrastructure, as you've seen in the capital proposals. And um, updating the city building codes, uh, to make sure that they are standard, uh, and, and up to date. Um, and with that, we will pause for innovative housing and economic development questions.
Questions from council? Doing a great job.
Right, thank you, everybody. Um, I'm going to pass the uh, presentation off to Luke for Safety and Quality of Life.
Thank you. Luke Calvi Henderson, Library Director, covering Safety and Quality of Life. Um, in the interest of time, since we're running a little behind, I won't read out the objectives. For you all to memorize, that three point two tattooed on me, but Bonnie says I can't tell you where at workplace hours were. So our departments are park and recreation, police, nine 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 one one communications, library services and fire. So you can see here, we have two major uh, sources of funding listed, general fund and nine one one communications. Of course, the library is mostly funded, you know, in this year entirely by joint sales tax. But that goes into the general fund and then is deployed from there. So here's our priorities, folks, property theft and nuisance crimes for strategic partnerships. Ensure accountability and transparency by investigating all use force incidents. And under parks, we have continued stewardship, maintenance and expansion of Animus River Trail, completing Chattens Key Hill improvements. And initiation of Durango Mesa Park Phase Two development. Uh, they also had a wonderful force goal for focused prioritization on employee satisfaction, business operations. Brand enhancement and customer service experiences in parks and recreation. So that's a bit of S O N E as well as S Q L right in there. Assessing and analyze alternative funding sources for the library, you may see that that's continued. We'll get a little bit more into that when we go to the specifics of priorities. Enhance quality assurance practices to enhance and improve, expand, sorry, to enhance. Nine one one communication office and aided retention, which is of course another workforce element. And purchase and install critical communications equipment to ensure seamless nine one one security delivery. We have a, a big difference here on some of the major variances, uh, most are workforce. Uh, as you see, we have reclassification of this new parks maintenance tech, two open space and trails maintenance tech. Uh, additions of programs manager and a reclassification from a ginist, uh, recreation coordinator to supervisor. Police with the P D fleet, fifty one thousand dollars and with two new E Vs and hybrids on the way. That variance may continue and works, and so we are really happy to see that, that's not, of course, falls under operational stewardship sustainability goals well. Library, our cost mostly came in some technology and maintenance root increases, specifically with snow removal contract changing. Um, and we see the special events have a huge jump, but that's just because we took almost all of that burden onto the friends of the library this budget year. And now it's going back to the budget, so you look over a three-year period, it's relatively slow. And with nine one one, we have the addition of a quality insurance and training supervisor, standby pay and the department step plan. And here is the expenses, of course, that shows some of those variations. Something that Kelly Schmidt mentioned to me from Parks and Rec, that's just really great to highlight. Where you see so many variances in some of their programming, almost all of those variances will actually be covered by increased revenues. Or they'll be reevaluated, they're really on a wonderful track in that revenue evaluation. And other aspects to judge their program's stability over a two to three-year period of each program. Um, staffing, you see there, there's a variance there. Um, one thing that I have to point out that while it says there's two new positions in nine one one emergency communications. There's one new position and one position moving from I T to be financed by nine one one. Not a new human being, they already exist, but their cost is getting moved. And uh. That for those. And then we get into our wonderful accomplishments. Um, we have also put these in by uh, strategic plan goals. Under exemplary stewards of public safety under three point one, we see police department have complete vegetation rules. Have complete vegetation rule around the Animus River corridor. Enhance police positions at the rec center. For after school, use targeted campaigns to enhance motors, pedestrian, bicycles, safety. And overall reduction of D U I related crashes. And enhance collaboration with schools for active threat response. That just continues to work year after year, really becoming more proactive police. And trying to reduce crime by focusing on the most important areas that they have actual influence and control over. Parks and Rec, they had uh largest swim classes for almost two thousand five hundred people. And they had uh CPR first aid. For over two hundred people. For the community, because all of those people. Being out and about in our community can be the lifesavers we need when we don't have. Places that are even stacked. Um under seamless operation, we have nine one communications have done a banner year with their Kalia accreditation. Which is just fantastic. Created, trained, implemented, functional, continue to when there are major disasters. Um enacted a more robust incident review system along improved quality assurance practices and early intervention. And and help call handling software and a G I S position for. Location functionality. And that gets really complicated, but if you've ever had a visit there, it shows you how quickly they can get to a location. And get people to those locations with those improvements. Under upgrades to park and safety, we liked that vegetation rule so much. Because it was a real true partnership between those two departments. Installed additional trail lighting at Schneider Park. Trail maintenance, fire mitigation and weed. The open spaces and additional security cameras at rec center and B M X facility. Again, out of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And the more people become aware of these uh public safety aspects and the more there are consequences, we've been lower cost overall. And in nine one one communication, that really goes into where that mapping and reducing also reduces contractor cards and eliminated the need for third party consultants. So increasing safety and efficiency and saving money all with one bullet point. Under public safety enhancements, Parks and Rec uh really did a lot of great maintenance. Uh they had the failing picnic tables and bench at Hill Crescent Pioneer. But of course, our gold star for the year has to go to the pickleball courts at Schneider Park. Extraordinarily well used and really revitalized that area of the Animus River Trail. Uh public art pieces at Schneider Park and along the Animus River Trail. Design and engineering for three sections of Animus River Trail. Construction uh and decambitation safety at Lake Nike Horse. And they had over a hundred twenty major and micro events, sixteen more than last year. Combined with almost seventy five thousand attendees, which exceeded pre pandemic levels. Something that is very hard to see. It's just such an amazing amazing achievement. And last but not least, on our achievements, we have to talk about how much community interest we have in our services. Over twenty thousand average monthly library visitors. Over two hundred new library cardholders every month. And thirty percent above benchmark and library program attendance and visitors. Um over our uh general area that we uh look at, which is libraries that share similar population centers. And parks killing it with thirty two thousand monthly rec visitors, six thousand pass holders. And an average of seventeen hundred Chapman Hill visitors and three hundred and forty eight pass holders. So stop patting ourselves on the back, look towards the future. Um here's where we're looking at our objectives, three point one police department. They want to enhance the safety and well being through code enforcement, open ranger initiatives. Again, continue to reduce crashes, violence, property nuisance crime through partnership and strategy. And part of that, collaborating with social services and courts to connect individuals without having treatment options. Reducing recidivism percentage that is covering a large percentage of the nuisance crimes. If we can stop that cycle, we're going to see amazing results for everyone, especially those individuals. Streamline processes and leveraging traffic cameras to shift patrol focus on D U I and distress. And that looks at, let's look at the page for that that's dangerous and focus on that versus behaviors that are problems. Adding an A I auditing software will help us to review that camera footage to enhance our current review activity process, which is just. Very exciting because oh, you know, otherwise it's just a whole bunch of staff hours looking at a whole bunch of incidents. And increase trust between the community police by offering with engaged Durango and ensure accountability and transparency. Transparency by investigating all use force incidents, as uh every email by Bryce ends. Uh public surf, public trust is never earned, it's borrowed. And the put in of their objectives, how they're going to make the place the community safer by enhancing communities. Critical communications equipment to more effectively handle volume and improve service delivery. Exploration and. And continued out reading client agency feedback process, they get about a forty percent return rate on their surveys, which is absolutely unheard of. And they're able to take that and make the improvements you've already seen on our twenty twenty four achievements and will continue to do that. So they are really a model for the city of how to achieve um continuous improvement on a day to day level. And then, of course, the addition of that quality search training coordinator supervisor position. Will directly take all those improvements and be able to enact them even faster than before. Under three point two, uh Parks and Rec wants to enhance and extend support for operations for Durango community events. And reauthorize the commission of accreditation of parks and recreation activities, CAPRA certification. Certification in the city, as we have seen, is not just a rubber stamp. It is a way that we can really look for best improvements because we have outside eyes coming in. And say, are you doing the things you say you are doing? And so that is so powerful to see them going for that. Um library, assess and analyze alternative funding sources for the library. That very notably does not say library district in it. Because we are looking at early twenty five to redo our community survey to see how much variance we have. We'll have a new, some new council members in April possibly, and we want to have bring that. And bring it before then so that we can make an informed decision. Is that the alternative something? Is it an and or model? And so that will be our mission for twenty twenty five. And of course, we want to assess them on, to design, implement and test our library operational plan. That will nest very neatly under the strategic operational plan for the city. Uh we're very happy that we've been able to work in that process so that we can be a better partner in achieving citywide goals. And last but not least, we want to perform fifteen to thirty percent above the average in every key service area benchmarked against similar libraries. And then we get to uh objective three point three. Under Parks and Recreation, they're going to construct, replace. Section of Animus River Trail between Santa Rita Park and Doubletree is still heavily used, so to see those improvements is going to be such a lift for the community. Uh Fremont Cemetery Immigration Irrigation. Not immigration, face one, no immigration in the cemetery and no immigration outside the cemetery is most important. Initiate construction of smart one sixty. Is it second one? And continuing uh phase two of Durango Mesa Park Foundation. And of course, last but not least. Plan inclusion of the ski hill improvements and installation of the big toe sculpture. And that goes through that. I'd be happy to hit any slides you have and answer any questions you want. We also have our Lily Department head stand to the more specifics.
Counsel? Questions? I love to see that we're initiating construction on smart one sixty. That'll be exciting, yes. Alright, thanks so much. Moving right along.
The big toe structure, is that using the old? Old rope toe at all? Remember, what, I don't know.
The gears and the mechanism that we have ordered safely, um not the actual cable that had been replaced multiple times.
Okay, but the rope, the rope toe, the actual rope itself, what did we end up doing with that?
I think that just ended up going in with the construction, right? It wasn't significantly historical already.
Right, and we couldn't save it. It didn't, yeah, I think they talked about various things, but it just wasn't possible, was it?
No.
Right, but we're saving the gears, that's great. Good, okay.
Okay. In the case, we'll jump into full area core, which is reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. So uh moving through this here, uh again, you can see our six objectives underneath this particular hole. Uh so this particular area incorporates three major departments of the city, airport, transportation and public works. Um you can see a quick rundown of the funding. As you'll notice, the majority of the funding associated with uh this whole area and related departments is enterprise funding. Uh so you can see, you know, forty three million dollars and and change there, uh hitting on, it says it's enterprise fund expenditures. Whereas we have a smaller amount uh hitting the general fund under C I P engineering streets and then that special revenue fund component on the street side as well. Um one thing we'll note as you go through here, if you look at the the numbers under the enterprise fund, um expenditures for both. Sewer and water, those are very large figures. Those do include some significant capital transfers out of the operating funds into their capital funds to cover. It's just a shipping of funds between the operating capital side. So consequently, that ten and seventeen million dollar figure are a bit skewed in terms of how we're looking at that. You can see in the sub bullets down there. That if you look at the actual true operating expenses before those capital transfers, which is just a one time shift of funds. They're much more normalized figures on that front, so just want to point that out. Um high priorities for twenty twenty five, we're continuing to facilitate phase one B uh the terminal expansion project at the airport. Uh looking to develop strategic approach to replace and upgrade about eight hundred million dollars with aging public works infrastructure. Uh identifying a strategy for repairing city sidewalks, conducting maintenance in the school safety zones, crossing at signals. Um expanding our C I P public information efforts, spending micro transit, on demand transit services. Uh implementing a funded multimodal C I P project list and implementing pay by sell option at parking gears within city limits. A couple of major variances on the operating budget side on the airport, you know, we do pick up debt service associated with phase one B, the airport took out loan proceeds for that project. So you'll see an increase, a corresponding increase in our operating expenditures that relate to the pickup of that debt service. On tracking recycle, we have the addition of one solid waste operator position, streets, they have one streets operator position being added. Uh water and sewer have several positions you can see listed there, collection and distribution tech, C and D tech two and utilities locator position. Uh on the water side, uh there's a three million gallon water tank entering the construction phase. That has to do with that large capital transfer that we talked about earlier. And then on transportation, there's the addition of a multi modal coordinator. Um breaking down the expenses, this is the components that just hit the general funds, the smaller components here, so you can see the. Variations there. In general, the variances are comparatively small, it's percentage uh changes from the twenty four amended to twenty five proposed budget. And then when we look at the non general funds, so largely enterprise fund expenditures. There's a couple that jump off here. If you look at the percent uh column on the far right. First off, I mentioned airport, that is directly attributed to the pickup of debt service, so it's not a true uh twenty four percent increase in the airport's operating expenditures. Rather, that's the single uh debt issuance costs or not the additions, that of service costs that we're picking up moving forward. Those are funded through passenger facility charges and increased airline rates that we've assessed um on that part, so uh just want to point that out. And then you also see that large twenty nine percent increase on the water side. Uh that's again driven by the fact that they have that large transfer of capital to to cover some capital outlay. On that front, and then the multimodal pieces associated with the staff. It was referenced as a variance. Uh looking at staffing here, uh we talked about overall staffing, the city limited changes on the general fund side. There are a few more proposed positions here, primarily hitting enterprise funds within. The city, so you can see uh the list uh over there on that variance number with a, you know. A series of positions that have been added in the differing enterprise fund of note. Uh tomorrow's council meeting, there are going to be a few items on the agenda which do feed into this chart here. Uh so there's proposed proposal for four additional water meter techs and two transit operator positions, and that's on tomorrow night's council agenda. Uh just running through lots of bullet points here, so I'll try to be swift. Um looking at this year's current major strategic accomplishments. Um out of the airport, we finalized procurement for a new aircraft rescue firefighting vehicle and completed a full scale emergency exercise. Uh under effective and efficient project management, a couple of major notes on the airport side, of course, you completed construction on phase one A of the terminal. Started construction of phase one B and also completed construction of phase one of the airport's vehicle parking expansion project. Uh it's a major upgrades and repairs to water leakage in the airport's potable water system. Um back into the city, we utilized new lucity module for project management. Improved mechanical and microbiological system capable of treating city sewage. Uh and a couple of major partnerships who want to count uh call out, partnered with C D O and Laclaw County to complete the grand new access control plan. Partnered with D F P D to build a water quality facility at station two. Um engineering staff continued to participate in Animus River watershed partnership and the watershed watershed plan. Stakeholder group, and we also partnered with Laclaw County to finalize construction of a Doppler weather radar station at the airport. Um and the last slide of twenty four accomplishments here, you can see on the operational excellence side, we updated all the. General conditions for construction contracts within the city and implemented those. Initiated a speed management plan, continue the implementation of comprehensive parking management plans. And developed and adopted a zero emission vehicle transition plan. And last, you have the community focus side, um you can see all of the great statistics there from things that have been accomplished throughout years uh on that front. Also, we'll call out the increased transit ridership and the zero bear for better air, free summer transit program that ran this summer. And wrap it up here, looking at next year with proposed twenty five budget, these are proposed strategic deliverables associated with the the R I T goal. Um on the infrastructure side, we're looking to facilitate that ongoing construction based on the the terminal. As well as initiating construction of phase two of the airport vehicle parking expansion project. Uh and then also moving through construction at the airport wastewater system improvement project. We have continuing efforts to update engineering standards and construction specifications, looking to complete the primary sludge pump replacement program. At the wastewater treatment facility that we're currently in now. Um and replace the Leitner Creed Cliff Station. On operational excellent size, it's uh excellent side, we're looking to continue to push for maximizing airline seat capacity and competition within our market through our service development. Marketing initiatives, restructuring our C I P process to improve efficiency. Uh continuing peak demand pricing in the central business district, manage parking and demand effectively. Continuing to evaluate opportunities to improve daily traction or cycling route efficiencies. Valuing fixed transit routes for efficiency and implementing the college Mesa Water Treatment Facility Improvement feasibility study. And I believe the last slide. Um on the public outreach and connectivity issues, uh or initiatives or other, we're establishing a formal art program at the airport for the future phase one B terminal spaces. Uh continuing to explore additional spring and fall cleanup options, expanding programs like walk and roll, bike rodeos and more. Provide additional information on parking supply availability, explore outreach efforts to minimize contamination in the recycling stream. Expanding micro transit on demand services, implementing funded multimodal C I P phases, including downtown's next step design. College and eighty safety project, Junction Street improvements, North Main eighty improvements, Midtown Safety Connectivity Project, Camino Crossing. And then lastly, in safety and preparedness, we'll be transitioning aircraft rescue firefighting vehicles at the airport from. A triple left bones to fluorine free bones to meet some environmental changes and considerations. Complete speed management plan funded by Safe Streets or all grants and implementing the A D A transition plan. That was a lot, so um any questions from council?
You were an efficient speaker. Any questions?
I have a question. You know, when you were, your your last listing including downtown next step design. Do you think it'd be okay to maybe uh just cross that out since we decided that we will hold off on it?
It's implemented funded multimodal phases, including the design. We we went forward with the design. We agreed to go forward with the design of it and not consider any construction costs.
Is it possible to put an ending date on that? I was trying to leave any questions for them to get in the future.
Is it, uh, I think we had like to through twenty twenty.
I mean, I think if we, it's a. Every time you see it, it's a good point, like people then will say, what are we doing? So. Uh we can look at just making sure our worrying whenever we bring it up would be design, no construction or something, we can figure something out.
Okay, hey, thanks.
Any other questions from council?
Oh, just one more that I thought about was on the funding of the uh full time and part time employees. Are the part time hours included in the uh? The funding stats for uh employees here?
So on the, you're talking about the the staffing chart right there, these will be full time positions only, so this isn't capturing part time.
And how do we capture part time?
They're definitely included in all the operating expenses, so if you look at the operating expenses for each of these divisions or departments, the. Any kind of part time expenditures will be included there, that they're not in this specific slide here.
Alright, moving on. Thank you, sir.
Uh number five is engaged informed community with the unfortunate acronym of I C. Our objectives, our objectives uh seem very simple, uh however. They're actually a lot more complex than they appear with the very simple words that we selected. Uh our first objective is to cha- champion a systematic approach for community engagement. Uh, our first objective is to cha- champion a systematic approach where community engagement, education, outreach. And communication thrive as cornerstone civic involvement. And our second objective is to cultivate and leverage communication systems through convenient, open and accessible information. Tony is not involved in our group, but our group does include the city clerk's office, which also involves municipal court. Uh, are the city manager's office, uh, divisions of public information and community engagement. As well as the Drango Welcome Center, in addition to that, we have public outreach people from. Uh, help human resources from Parks and Rec, from nine one one, Public Works and from Transit in our group as well. So kind of everyone that's outreach and talking to the community on a regular basis and trying to work through those programs. Uh, sources of funding pretty straight ahead, um. Like there's much there to really talk about, so uh, let's talk about the twenty five priorities. So in twenty five, we are really focusing on streamlining our workflow and reducing paper. Uh, leveraging our new technology that will be in municipal court uh, going live in January. And reducing overall this paper in the city hall vault as well as the archive, and this is with the intention of. Making the move when that does happen to the new structure to make that a lot easier so that we're moving way less paper and relying more on our electronic. Files for those. Uh, we do have two new deputy clerks and we are doing additional training to make sure that they are. Fully versed in all the services of the clerk's office and so that we can maintain our high level of service. And of course, we'll be expanding that new court software after it's implemented in January, the new software will assist the city attorney's office as well as our. Defense attorneys to provide twenty four seven access to case management and the, you know, determining discovery and things like that that can. Move a lot faster when they can access it all the time. Uh, community engagement, of course, is a fairly new division in our organization, but um, they are working on strategic deliverables. That will be evidenced by an increased number of views, the public gives for public information office for news releases, videos and social media. And of course, they're working uh, along with our P I O department, building those positive relationships within the diverse community. With a very targeted outreach with the new engaged Durango platform. And public meetings, classroom visits, organizational visits and so on. Expenses are pretty again, straight ahead, smaller groups here, um, nothing too major. There is a municipal court is slightly less, and we do say, we do hope that the costing municipal court will continue to decline even though our cases are maintaining. Uh, simply because of the streamlining of our new software. The defensive driving program, there is a substantial increase there, however, the program has been underutilized and. Pretty much not utilized at all in the last couple of years, um, and our new judge is looking at uh, all kinds of specialty court options and. Other options for defendants, so that's kind of where we're budgeting that a little bit more money in there to make sure that that's available for him when he works through those programs. Then with one staffing that you see there, that one addition is actually the change from the municipal judge from a part time to a full time person. Um, and even though he is contracted, he is under our payroll department, so he does show here as an additional full time employee. For municipal court. For the few metrics provided by our public information office, uh, Tom and his crew with the. The number of increases on videos, news releases and uh, the social media metrics. Um, some Tom somewhat unorthodox at times and humorous posts, I think are garnering interest and at least humanizing. The uh, staff here that we have with the organization. Uh, twenty twenty four, uh, we did the city clerk's office participated in a special event forum that was hosted by. Ellen over at Parks and Rec, um, making sure that the businesses in town and the vendors knew exactly how to get licensed and how to stay legal and. Compliance with our rules, uh, of course, we do our mock council meetings every year for the third graders and uh. Community engagement also added a mock council meeting for high school students this year as well. We're looking forward to the third graders coming hopefully in November for their their government chapter again this year. Uh, the engaged Durango forums have had continued increased turnout. And of course, the new walk and rolls and the nerds night out trivia, we're hoping will be great successes as well. And then five point two, there'll be the launch of the new engaged Durango website that community engagement is working on. And according to surveys, a hundred percent of the respondents that surveyed said they would attend another public meeting after attending one recently. Deliverables, again, you'll see that uh, these are what we'll be working on in the coming year. Uh, the community engagement will be working on an increase in the number of views, this is actually our public information office. Um, for news releases, videos, social media impressions and engagement on the engaged Durango website. And then, of course, we're looking at all those post interaction survey data to make sure that. We're doing everything we can to make those meetings as engaging as possible. Again, under five point two, we're going to work on reducing that paper and streamlining that workflow using as much of the technologies we have, our records retention. Software moved to cloud based, so that, you know, we're going to leverage a little more of that technology as have more of that storage in the cloud and less. Paper to be moving around when that time comes, and of course, expanding that software. And then continues like you utilizing engaged Durango to collect feedback. And that's pretty much it.
Excellent, any questions from council? I just want to say the first strategic plan that I was in, the first year of council, there was no like community outreach in it, there was no. Like public information really, like it was, there was no social media really, and then we added that in um, to try to get the message out and. Where we're at now is like completely, like anyone that stops me, it's because of our social media or like the walk and rolls or like literally, it's. Like everyone talks about it, so congratulations, you guys are doing awesome.
Great team, and then a few, we were at the uh, trivia night that Luke emceed on Thursday at Esotera.
I didn't go.
Show out, very good showing, uh, some gifts were given, uh, there was one team that kind of really ran away with it, uh, but there were some other teams that knew. Questions that we were like, hmm, that's interesting, that they would know, but I thought we all had a great time and it was a, it was a good event, so hopefully those will really keep. Picking up and attendance going.
Great, excellent, any other questions from council? Right, you know, number six.
Last but not least, here we are at strategic workforce development, um. Uh, I'm not going to go through all of the sub goals here, but uh, strategic work for. Development is dedicated to enhancing the skills, capabilities and satisfaction of the city of Durango employees. Um, this whole area underpins the strategic deployment of resources and the services. Uh, we uh, uh, have the departments are uh, human resources, risk management and the self insurance fund. And this was a great uh, the company picnic party here, uh, it's a great time for employees, I like that. Um, going on here, we have uh, all staffing levels across all funds. Um, I know we've touched on this in the presentations uh, slides before this, but um. Twenty twenty four, uh, we had four hundred twenty eight positions that were adopted in the budget year and throughout twenty twenty four, um. There were four additional positions added, and we'll have more information on that on the next slide. Um, two were in the general fund and two were within other funds. Uh, there were ten positions requested to be added uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Uh, three in the general fund and seven within the other funds. And uh, the proposed twenty twenty five F T E headcount, uh, bringing us up to four hundred forty two, uh, that's fourteen F T E. F T E count increase from the twenty four adopted budget. Um, here's that further breakdown um, of this staff requested changes from twenty four to twenty five. Uh, the strategic workforce development fund breakdown, uh, human resources is in the general fund and uh, the self insurance and risk management are funded through internal services. Total funding there is eleven million two hundred forty two thousand or forty six dollars. Uh, looking at our twenty five priority focus. Um, we are looking to can uh, increase our competitiveness by improving wages, benefits and incentives through. Compensate compensation study that we're currently uh, in right now. Uh, create a robust onboarding and orientation program for new employees. Continue to leverage technology for H R recruitment and risk efforts, um, we've seen a big push in this uh, in the last uh, year, really getting away from paper and. Um, creating more of a employee self service option for for completing forms and tasks, and then obviously our recruitment efforts. Um, we're looking to enhance uh, internship and mentorship programs, uh. And partnerships with uh, local uh, schools and things like that going forward for this next year. And uh, develop and implement a workforce progression program for our employees. In risk management, uh, this year in twenty twenty four, we were able to shop our worker workers compensation insurance providers saving around two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then right now we are out to bid for, we're able to make any changes there, uh, that will be included in reconciliation. Uh, self insurance, uh, through continuous efforts to stabilize our self insurance fund, uh, through the per employee per month budgeting model. Um, offering uh, employee education uh, classes on how to best utilize our health insurance plan. And a continuous evaluation of our health benefits providers, uh, we've allowed this fund to reach a funding level to cover our. Uh, incurred but not recorded or I V N R, um, requirement, which in the past has been an uh, an area of concern in our audit. And in human resources, uh, like I mentioned on prior slide, we're currently conducting a compensation study to look at our competitiveness and through our wages, and this will. So here are those uh, items that again mentioned, so overall, uh, between the three funds, we're looking at a one percent increase for twenty twenty five. Uh, there's a lot listed here, so I'm just going to touch on this, the highlights, uh, looking at our twenty twenty four, um. Strategic accomplishments, uh, we were able to standardize the employee recruitment and branding, um, with uh. Inclusive language on all of our job postings, uh, if you were looking at jobs in years past, it was just a standard job description and now we've. In the job posting world as far as what it looks like and feels like to work for us, um, so these changes that have resulted in an increase to our total number of applicants received. Were up eight point five percent over twenty twenty three, and um, in addition to that, our average applications received per job are up forty eight point nine nine percent. Over twenty twenty three, so tremendous growth there. Um, continuation of the three percent cost of living adjustment. Our health insurance plan, we were able to update to a July through June one plan year to better align with our budgeting process. Um, we are able to shop and secure new supplemental involuntary benefit providers, resulting in cost savings. To employees. Uh, our risk and safety trainings, um, were uh, updated this year, uh, to keep our workforce safe and in place. Some of these trainings included forklift training, CPR first aid, A E D training, fall prevention, lockout, tagout, confined space. An outstanding participation of over ninety percent in our twenty twenty four employee engagement survey was spectacular and um. So really looking to take those employees that already work for us and grow their future with city of Durango. Um, looking ahead, um, here are some of our strategic deliverables, I'm not going to go through all these just for time, um, but we are. Looking to have an improved again onboarding and orientation program, uh, increase our uh, org- uh. Training organizationally wide for human resources and risk management, um. We have an increase into our employee tuition assistance program, as Devin touched on earlier, uh, we've seen a big jump in that, um, over last year. And we hope to build on that for our employees and then uh, increase uh, our presence with local and regional job fairs and career events. Continue to grow our workforce. Any questions?
Questions from council?
Alright, um, well, thank you, the next uh, section is Rogers Tax uh, proposal and specifically the Rogers Tax Council Determination. Um, so we're going to start off with a twenty twenty four review, uh, so council, uh, council last year at the Butter Retreat presented with several proposals. Uh, and they were implemented and we're going to have, um, several presenters, uh, probably people actually implementing those, I'm going to go through that. Um, so first of all, sustainability, um, Marty is actually trapped traveling today, um, so he's. Um, going to try to be available for questions, but it sounds like he's boarding a plane breakout.
I have a question, are we asking for council feedback on this stuff for the twenty five proposals or just information?
Information.
Okay, great, making sure, I just wanted to, because. Yeah, I didn't know if we need to take a pause, so.
We want to take a break, I think we've had a break scheduled, right?
I think if we can, we're a little bit behind schedule, we need to keep moving. Keep on going, just wanted to make sure.
Um, so for twenty twenty four, the first uh, proposal to review is the E bike rebate program, as you might remember, we. Uh, uh, implemented uh, for the second year row, the E bike program. Um, which was supplemented by additional grant funding and that program did have really good success. Um, with the reporting and uh, it continues on through December with the rebates that we are offering. Uh, Marty wanted to highlight that, um, it's been a great option for low income and workforce community members, uh, may not always have access to a vehicle. Uh, as a way uh, to supplement driving a car. Um, it also significantly reduced parking and traffic strain, uh, which relates to positive impacts for visitors and residents. And of course, we have greenhouse gas savings uh, with that as well, so overall, uh, very successful project. Uh, next, uh, Bryce, are you, uh, can you talk about the Meridian barriers and the photo case as a review for twenty twenty four?
Yeah, sure. You know, we stand right here.
You as well, so.
Yeah, we're using them for um, every event and what's great about the Meridian barriers. Is they can handle any. Um, we looked at other options which uh, would involve tearing down the the concrete and. Um, electric infrastructure and things like that that other cities use, which are. Out of the street actually. And our main concern is, we have a. Every weekend, just to. And so we're looking at the safety of the citizens and what's. And this, uh, if we can be, um. Seen as little as possible and the smallest footprint have the the biggest safety impact, that's our goal. That's where the trailer goes in. The help of our other city partners. You know, set. Have the dance load back up and and. And we want to be able to. Um, cover the entire main street is our goal.
Great, and then next we do have the photo case as well.
Yeah, so the photo case, um, you know, it was purchased and we've used it and it is a good tool, we also have the trailer booth we use and we set up and we're going to set it up right. Now at the lights that were banned last year recently. Um, to, uh, and that's more deterrent that you could see. The photo pack was more of um, something that we wanted that you couldn't actually see and it would be disruptive. Uh, we found it's not quite as advertised, we're still going to use it, uh, but we don't want to continue purchasing these because you didn't hear them. And with the wind, they set down and um, just not as advertised, but still something that we can use and it's going to be a great benefit to us, um, just don't want to. Be real careful anytime we're spending, obviously taxpayer dollars. That's outstanding.
Uh, and next we do have a review of the Animus River Trail Art Project, so the success of this project was actually defined by two art installations. Um, and at both the Schneider Park Improvement Area and at several different places along the River Trail, we've had. Four uh, art installations, so again, a very successful project and I believe there's still one in progress to be. So again, a very successful project and I believe there's still one in progress to be. So we're really happy with. The work that's been done on that and the progress made. The council determination.
Yeah, thank you. I've given a recent data on the success of our free fair program, so I won't. But you can see. That last year was the first year that we did the full summer and we had over a twenty seven percent increase over ridership in twenty twenty two during the same timeframe. And then in twenty seven, and if you remember at the study session, I highlighted that we gave over fifty thousand rides in August this year. Just kind of as an indicator of the impact that the free transit has in September, we. Thirty seven thousand rides, which is still, we're right on target, that that's kind of average for September, but you can see that difference. Between offering free fare and not. And then the free summer parking program was kind of a partnership with the free fare. We've shown the impact that this program has with the data here. These are occupancy. Data for the meters, so you can see how underutilized and low percentage of occupancy those meters had. West of Narrow Gage on Seventh, Eighth and Ninth Street. And then in July and August shows how much better those were utilized and how we were able to. Impact and disperse parking throughout downtown.
Next, we're gonna move on to the twenty twenty five Rogers Tax Council Determination Proposals. So those funding buckets have not changed. Still. Free transit, again, community events, transit, parking program, Meridian barriers, EVIC rebate program. Elevate local performance and workforce housing. Before we get into the specific projects. As a staff, we always want to present a balanced budget to council. And we did receive more proposals than funding available this year. So as part of that transition to outcome budgeting, we did take a very objective internal review of the proposals. And prioritize them based on staff. Would like to change that again. It is council determination. Based on the proposals we've received. The impact to the citizens had the highest weight. All my strategic plan alignment and public input. So what public input has that project had? Or will it have by the time. Completion. Purpose, financial analysis and reporting. Were the next highest weighted and then finally strengths, weaknesses and mitigating factors was least weighted, but still scored. Reason that is generally a summary of the project and. We do want to give a summary score, but we wanted to make sure. The impact especially strategic plan alignment and public input was. Lastly. Views were. Create a product score and then those were ranked order to show which. And as you might remember. We did not. That project from the available balance. The staff recommendation to keep this for a balanced budget. So with that, I am again going to turn it over to Sarah to talk about her first proposal.
Yeah, so once again, we're just. Free fair summer and this would replace. And we are pretty confident that this. Industry that this is having an impact on the visitors. Really great fit and it has been really successful. And then the second one that we have, this is a new request. We get approached pretty frequently from event planners. For to offer free shuttle service and free transit for a lot of the events that are hosted in town. That is an additional cost for us. We don't budget that in our operating budget. So this is just the cost recovery. We're obviously not looking to make. Any type of profit off of this, but this is just the cost of operating a special service. To help with congestion downtowns, so we can operate shuttles from satellite parking areas. We can offer free transit. Those days that fall outside of a free fair summer and the cost to operate that. Would be just over forty five hundred dollars. Some of the events that this would cover would be Snowdown Parade, Earth Day, Animus River Days, Fourth of July Parade. Samon Brew Fest and the Cowboy Social. And then the last request we have, so our parking. Program that we have been funding through the Lodge's Tax the last couple of years has been successful, but there's no way to really ensure that it is only. Benefiting downtown business employees. And that's a request that we hear pretty frequently is to make parking easy and affordable for folks who work and work downtown. So we kind of wanted to enhance that program to really just target the downtown business owners and employees. The way we're gonna do that. Is reduce the cost of the monthly permit and expand the location where they're able to park. So the permits would be good in all city lots and any of our fifty cent meters. That's like ninety one. New on-street parking meter locations that these permits would be good at. This request actually subsidizes that discount for the fund because it is a pretty big hit to the transportation fund to offer that. Reduced impact, but for less than sixty cents a day, either employees or business owners. Can provide these permits for downtown business employees with that with that subsidy. Parking permit program, a couple, uh, to the business owner employment and I should say. We're needed at the end of October, pricing's available at both lots on Second Avenue, North and West of downtown Pro, of Main. We commute this with downtown business owners with Quincy and just different things because. I know like I, I. Didn't know about it until I got a presentation from you this year about the. Stuff and so I'm sure it's really. Any other questions for Sarah on these ones?
And covering for Marty's, this new Asian, all the saving try to help become. Applicants for the funding, we would recommend to specifically do. The safer area for, any questions on that one? And then next, Bryce, do you have anything that you want to add to that proposal for twenty twenty five funding?
Yeah, we want to, we're wanting to continue to improve these. Purpose the same now for this next year. We, right now, we're able to get. Each side and we want to complete that all the way down main.
Great, thank you. Elevate local performance. So this year we had a proposal for art products. This one is different where we're looking. Throughout the year, so this would be. For application from event coordinators, so we don't have specific events identified just yet. However, Tom Crosby, through all the grant programming and things like that that he does, will make this funding available to. Again, supplement the performances and events that are already being put off by community members. Tom, do you have anything that you want to add to?
Um, afternoon, only thing I would add is. We would kind of plug and play this funding into the framework of our Lodge's Tax Arts and Culture Funding Program. So we already have the structure at which we'll administer this funding through. We find that a lot of the Lodge's Tax events that we receive, they're not able to be funded at whatever viewers have chosen to fund. More projects at a smaller dollar amount. And so what we're trying to do is kind of pilot an approach in twenty twenty five with. Targeted larger pots of funding that is more at that impact level that's specifically carved out. For enhancing events with. Likely music, but going in with that approach that we want to have fun at. Use the framework, just. Incur our viewers of being able to provide pathways of. What it will look like. Twenty five into six, our Lodge's. That higher impact amount, so we would in theory have fewer projects funded, but. Deeper more last.
Can I ask a question? This one? Or did you wanna finish? Why is this being looked at from a council determination? Allocation. Because this is events and it's. It's promotion, which is. Specific allocation you have for sustainable marketing and events. And on top of it, this city. Took over that total control. Of that allocation. Because it used to be Visit Durango. And one of the reasons it being so high. Perceived to be high, so why would we not? Fund it from.
That's a great question. So the Lodge's Tax Arts and Culture Program Funding, a lot of the applicants that. They heard of the. Music, they, the, or they, um, do find the arts really category. That comes from that culture ground to the strong. Time with the arts and culture community. We found it appropriate to seek. To. Culture bucket in a more robust way. Yeah, that would be.
Unless. Take over, but I want to. I, I understand you have the arts and culture component. Totally agree. But you need, you're asking for funding for, not you, but we are, are trying to. Events. We have. Pots that we can look into. In my opinion, one that would could be considered. Is the specific allocation for the event sustainable art and events. Not the council determination necessarily, but to consider at least. I'm not saying it shouldn't be part of arts and culture for the main thing. But the events, why not? Because your answer is purely about the organization is arts and culture. I agree with that. So it's okay. But it's the event that you're looking funding for and you're saying.
So if we look at the battle language for the Lodge's Tax, specifically the council determination, it is to supplement the other categories within Lodge's Tax. Arts and culture and the events.
And I'm not trying to see if you can justify the allocation. I'm just asking. Would it make sense to consider also the marketing, special events? Category allocation because it was very well funded. And our community seemed. Right on back. That would be too much on tourism and marketing. And this would even fit in that category.
I think as we reevaluate the grant. Visit Durango that will be brought in five. That's a great, a great lens to look through as we're potentially rebuilding what those. Think to use the framework of an existing successful grant program such as Lodge's Tax Arts and Culture. To ensure we have a pathway from. To ensure we have a pathway from um uh cultural organizations is having an assurance of funding. Being as early as possible, my only hesitation with with your proposal for twenty. Organization. Don't tank off until a little bit later in the year, we might not be able to season um. Before we might be, we might we might be able to success with funding um. To answer that impact level, but I do think that's a. I think when we're reevaluating what those event means are going to look like in twenty twenty five and over.
It's just interesting, because I I hear in the city telling what's going to happen to people.
And look, we do have a housing, a workforce housing inventory proposal from uh Mike French and again, we'll cover for him. Um this one quality um and the reason. Internally, uh primarily one uh um and being packed the uh uh. It was purchased, one, we don't have a yield, and two, it was all budgets, this one is not included in the budget as of right now, however, we would like to make that change, so you can do that. Uh this packet, so you have more information available, um and with that, the twenty twenty five lodgers tax proposals. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just, yeah, sure, one thing real quick, um I've living in a company time council what to do. So council can bring things in off, talk about them on reviewing these according to what our priorities are as council, and so I just wanted to clear. Do it, so many.
Hey Ellen, you know, okay, um one hundred thirty thousand, is that going to follow the same principles as the last award that we're doing month?
Uh yes, so the the mechanisms will be the same, but again, the unit has not been adopted yet.
Any other question?
Just maybe a little bit of clarity, so the hundred and twenty five would be down payment.
Um we. As we did with the unit that we have available, and we would be reducing the cost uh because we we purchased the unit. Deep restrictions on it, um do the exact same program again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh and then did we want to take a break? Um I think.
Um we, so the community this next section, we did invite the community support funding agencies to come uh present to council. Sounds perfect for recess. We're gonna take a break. Those reactions make me like.
Is up next.
Thanks for lunch. Yeah. So is that me? Am I up?
There we go.
Okay, so we will kick it off with hearing from United Way on their 2025 request and believe we have Elise online.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'm home with this sick kiddo today, so I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, but appreciate your time. I know that in here, I'm Elise Avastano, VP of Operations and Finance for United Way of Southwest Colorado. There were a couple of documents that did not make it into the agenda for some reason or another, so if it's okay with you. I'd like to share my screen if someone can enable that for me, just to illustrate a few things, but I'll keep going while we wait.
You should be able to already, they said.
It's saying I can't while someone else is sharing.
Okay, hang on. Sorry.
Okay, there we go. That should work. Okay, perfect. So while I'm speaking, I just kind of want you all, hopefully you can see this, to just have take a look of where we have been and then kind of where we will be going. For United Way of Southwest Colorado has worked with the city of Durango for over 20 years now to help out with the CFS process. We find tune it over the event to become at this point, however, always ask for feedback to us as good as they evolve. If there are changes are required to provide a basic housing, life skills, mental disability. This year, we're requesting the same amount of funding as five percent admin fee and increasing this amount last year to the 111,000 to just 50,000. So that was, um, this is the summary of and all started of what our 2020, 2024 funding has been. You can see the amount requested, the amount that was actually organizations brought in, if any, thanks to those leveraged, um, those city dollars. So we'd like to propose something to hopefully help close the gap even further this year. Historically, there has been no cap or limit to what organizations can apply for dollar amount wise from CFS funds. So we'd like to propose a cap of $20,000 in requests for this year moving forward. And I'll scroll through this a little bit so you can see, but essentially only seven organizations requested, only one community connections requested.
That spreadsheet, just because it was hard if council can get that.
I can reach out to you after this. Sorry, this is Elliot. Yep, yep.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
No, thank you very much for what you do and presenting it.
And let me talk about Youth Services and Jason St. Mary.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us today. It's good to see so many different faces. Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day for all those who are celebrating. It's actually a day off one, so here we are. Just to share your time, you know, LaPlata Youth Services has entered our 38 years for believing families across LaPlata County. And the needs are continually shifted. We've seen some alarming trends in the last two to three years, especially mental health as well as housing, food, housing and food insecurity and access to basic resources. And LaPlata Youth Services at the forefront of collective, a strategic partner. I've been doing this work for I used to kind of wear as a badge or not, but I'm doing this work from in some really difficult places. From South African townships, the public housing neighborhoods of Denver, to indigenous communities across Southwest. And in all honesty, these last three years have been some of the most difficult professional years that I've experienced in my career. Many sleepless nights, lots of tears shed. It's, it's been rough. But I heard the suffering, the struggle is real of many of the youth and families in this area. And so, you know, I'm proud and honored of the working needs and and looking at that upstream of preventative work is of light. They have some protective factors, the resiliency. To what we know is that, you know, youth do, do not feel connected, do not have those internal protective factors. Have a, across our programs through our school-based therapeutic and collaborative diversion program, radical possibilities, sort of therapeutic mentoring program. We're starting historic numbers across our program and had a waitlist across qualified programs this year at some point last year. And 73,000 were asking for a 17,000 increase, dollar increase this year to expand our capacity to meet those needs. And even that, we know isn't enough. Alyssa, you want to talk a little bit, this is our assistant director, Alyssa Badhart. You want to talk a little bit about some of the highlights for programming this year?
Sure. So we've been able to provide programming for our therapeutic mentorship program at some of the most year back before was Neustadt. And with that, we're really able to work with students that don't have access to the amount of even social activities of being in town from Durango. So we're able to work them during school once a week and then take them into the community once a month. And it's a really great opportunity for those young, learn what healthy relationships, look like coping skills and emotional regular adult, which is an amazing protective factor. Services in the Durango nine, our school district, we serve historic numbers this year. And we're really able to track what the needs of students are within our school district and put services where they're most needed. Um, has again served historic numbers and had a waitlist for the first time in the program. And within that, we're also able to train graduate level and undergraduate level students to enter the helping services profession and ideally stay in Durango. So they're able to stay here after employment and I believe at least 50% stayed in Durango. So we're really proud, not just of the work that we're doing with young people in LaPlata County, but being able to ideally train skilled professionals within our community that don't feel like they have to leave after graduation to pursue her career that really works for them.
That's one of the last things, you know, we're really proud of we're a small organization, does a lot of work. And I'm mentioning my six-year listeners, we're waiting on their fifth year shortly. We pay as all the, all the interns that come through, we pay them monthly, site their time and effort. We're really concentrated on the collective well-being, I would say, of Durango, LaPlata County as a whole. So that, that's our work and that's our proposal. Appreciate your time. The answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from council?
Do you know how many clients you service this past year and how many new services coming here?
Absolutely. So we served youth and families combined over 600 this past year through the area of services that we offer, and I don't see that decreasing, council member.
Look, there's social programs, we're looking at about a 10 to 20% increase of students that we serve every year and a 20 to 30% increase in referrals every increase in here. And that's probably anywhere from 30 to 50, and that's just the school.
Increase between last year, uh, this year, 23, 24, and another 20, 20% increase between this year, 21, 22. So we're in intensification of behaviors that we're seeing too in that earlier ages, uh, it's, it's concerning in a lot of ways.
And just one last question for the previous. Do you think that's from the COVID ordeal?
I believe the repercussions of COVID has had a lasting impact on, I know a lot of the youth and families that we serve experienced a massive amount of this little retreat. And so I think COVID factors, especially when it comes to you don't have housing, a lot of the other things assume that.
Any other questions?
I'm the staff liaison. I know the council knows this, but could you just highlight for the public what a tremendous job the organization does in securing grants to make this money really go so much further?
Looks are one of our, you know, this past year, it's not a grant writer, they realized that they didn't really have a pulse in what we were doing. So we successful in diversifying our funding streams from, even if it's not even grammar and working more with state entities too. Um, because we know, um, you know, if life is a nonprofit, it's in any at times. Um, so to be able to really exhaust our resources, we have 10 staff. So, you know, to be able to figure out ways to strategically fund these programs, it's been a maze.
If they're bringing some of that technical work more in-house, we're able to free up staff time to look around evaluation. So luckily for all of us, there's a bunch of people at LaPlata Youth Services that are huge data nerds. So we're able to really use numbers to more effectively tell our story. So we've been looking at more pre and post data factors from when students begin services to when they finish the services. And we're seeing tremendous increases. I think number wise, we're looking about, I think, 117% increase in internal protective factors from the beginning to the end of services. So we're really able to get some more behind the stories that we're telling, which has really been impactful for us and really helped our grant writing.
Anything else?
All right. Thank you so much.
And next, we have access.
And friends.
Governor of Stern, uh, I am the quick intro person and then I have the people you really want to hear from, um, who will jump in. I'm Serat Levinworth. I'm with Access Health System. I'm our Vice President of Strategic Initiatives. And I get to introduce Molly Rodriguez and Sergeant Sweetwater as
Sweetwood?
Sorry.
And Sergeant Sweetwood, um, as, as the folks who really know this program the best. City Council and our community have been so supportive of this program and also of access programs in general to respond to, um, community members in crisis. So part of the reason I wanted to kick off the intro was just to thank City Council for that support. You all invest in the acute treatment unit and you invest in the detox center. We have existing contracts and MOUs for that, so we're not up here to talk about that today. But it is worth taking a moment to recognize that because all of these programs work together. What we're here about today is our co-responder program, which City Council took the lead on with the police department and access in making it a reality in 2021 as a very unique first kind, uh, first type of program of this kind in our communities. So thank you for considering the renewal of this work for the core program. And now you get to stop hearing from me and hear from the folks who really know about it.
Good, well, I guess I should say good afternoon since it is afternoon. Thank you for having us here today. Co-responder program has been involved too. What we do at the police department because it's helping us reduce the amount of people that we take to jail. It has reduced immensely the amount of legal holes that we put on people because a lot of times we're able to to, you know, we get people, the treatment is starting a process versus just having to take them to the hospital. One and one, or I'm way five or anything like that. So it helps to be able to focus on calls and regular control on those types of calls. The clinician asks for responding to calls. Have behavioral health issues and remedy those in the escalate situations. And give the people and doing the regular things that they want to do throughout their days and stuff. So, you know, we partner, what, three years now, well, a few, four years. Other than just me standing up here and looking nice and let Molly talk because she looks nicer to me.
He does look nice with all that paint today. Um, yeah, I've had the pleasure of standing before you for many years now and Um, yeah, I've had the pleasure of standing before you for many years now and have really appreciated the support. Um, when we first started the program back in two thousand and twenty-one, there was part of me that thought, oh my gosh, this is a huge undertaking. And I've worked in crisis for over twelve years. And I have to say that this was the last pillar of our crisis services that we needed in this community. When it comes to nine one one calls, they come no matter who responds. And as a community, we've decided to send the right people to the right calls at the right time. Um, this year, we're sitting at a little over twelve hundred calls total, um, year to date, which is about the same amount that we had last year full year. We're seeing an increase in calls. We have community members who specifically request our team, which is a huge compliment and really speaks to the value of the service. We have the opportunity to have our programs established together with the larger access system because of left entity that are hugely impactful, um, are telling people to involuntarily are extremely low. Um, this year, those are three percent so far, standing warrants for community members in contact with the core team. That there are jail-based services that we serve everyone, every population in our staff show that we're hitting groups. This year, council presentation, modeling to more in the form of outreach and engagement and referrals. A clinician with an officer and they write, um, we've added or are requesting addition of a case manager position similar to without meeting the expertise of a licensed clinician on staff. We think that it would really help to free up our expert team to go to more calls because sometimes those calls do get stepped where there isn't a team available because they're doing a follow-up or they're doing a lower level contact. That really could be better addressed by a case manager type position. Thank you for your time and attention and any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from this group? No questions. Thank you. Thank you so much for your work, you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We have a proposal from the La Plata County Humane Society. And one, uh, because really Bruce was not able to join us today. Um, so there are several weeks now. Request and, uh, pull up future models. Um, currently, right now, the La Plata County Humane Society handles about four thousand animals per year. Um, about two thousand, what's your housing costs associated to that? Um, there's another about two thousand animals that come through there for other services such as shipping, licensing, neutering, feeding, and so on and so forth. Right now, their total operation budget for two thousand and twenty-four was actually short. Four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So they're actually asking for a moderate increase from both the city and the county. Asking for is about thirty-one thousand dollars. We're under contract until two thousand and twenty-eight, that amount could, uh, our funding source one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars per year. But they're asking that goes up to two hundred thousand dollars a year. And then I'm also working with them as a model to figure out, uh, absolute usage of what that is um, to see what that is going to be moving forward, uh, within the coming years. And with that, they also offset their costs this last year by eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars through fundraising uh, for the total shelter operation cost of about one point seven million dollars per year. The animal protection services, um, those are going to remain the same for the contract, the two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars and eight, two hundred and eighty-nine, eighty-three. And so with the con, with the, uh, combined rate of four eighty-nine, eighty-three is what the asks could be for with this year. And I might be able to answer questions on that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, so what what did we give them last year?
Hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars for, uh, for shelter operations. And then the animal protection services are the same cost. This would be an increase of thirty-one thousand dollars this year to assist with that.
Okay, any other questions?
How how much or is, do you know Bob, that they are relying on this funding, like as a percentage, like what?
The county's portion is four hundred fourteen thousand dollars. And then again, ours is one hundred and sixty-nine right now, but we're asking from years. Um, as it's out and that's where we're trying to absolutely pay our portion of it. But as, uh, City Manager mentioned earlier, you know, there are other communities within our region here, the county, we don't opinion anything at this point. Um, and we know this is just a open shelter, it's a non-kill shelter, so it'll accept animals from everywhere. So I'm working with Julie right now to kind of put some forward calls on that. Uh, maybe work up some emergency contingency funding because they don't want to turn anything away, but just kind of work that in. So that's, uh, we're picking a hard part, but everybody else also has a fair share.
Thank you.
And about, um, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-four was, um, based off of their fundraising. So they're pretty successful with their fundraising initiative. So just a.
They do think that they can increase that as well. There was a big article in the paper that day about their, uh, thrift stores. They're doing there to help leverage those prices there to continue that fundraising effort as well.
It's roughly twenty percent of their revenue, is what it sounds like. Okay.
Okay, so you 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 just mentioned that it's a no-kill shelter. Okay, does that mean we we feed these dogs until they pass on?
Yeah, they pass on. They 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 do do that. I mean, there's there's extreme circumstances that come along with that. But typically, they say the average stays about fourteen days maximum. Most of the animals are really going to find their home.
Then they go somewhere else or?
No, they're a successful adoption. That's true.
Okay. My my biggest concern is it's kind of, this is a big, like, it's a big number, right? You're only getting almost half a million dollars here and we're giving United Way three twenty-five to spread amongst many organizations. We're giving a hundred and twenty to youth in our in our area. We have, um, two hundred and seven. So it's it's a significant increase from any other organization. And so I think as a one city counselor, to like get information as to what other regional, um, shelter. I support the Humane Society and animals and all of that. It just is a big number and I think, um, that's where my hesitation potentially is. And questioning, just what do other shelters spend? How do they get their funding? I think those are, oh, give, you know, a little more information. I know you don't have that, obviously, so. Okay, great. Perfect. Any other question? Thank you.
Um, appreciate, um, taking time out of their day and some folks that were, um, off today. Uh, with that, we're gonna pivot into the study session, um, where the council was brought through each one of the two thousand and twenty-five proposed capital projects. Um, as a request from that study session, um, was a five-year capital improvement as well as the fund summary. So we're going to start with kind of, um, our big picture outlook of each one of those fund summaries. And then, um, I will take us into the fund summaries for the two thousand and twenty-five budget. So with that, um, starting off with the two thousand and five parks, open space and trails. Um, we do have, um, some projects and providing some definitions at the study session that talks about a new project, an annual project, a continuation or reappropriation. So those first, uh, projects, as you'll see, from two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and thirty and this fun natural lands preservation and open space maintenance, as well as Durango Trails, park trail and rec improvements, um, those are all showing, um, is what we would consider, uh, annual projects. Just recurring, um, typically related to ongoing maintenance or replacement of a three-month cemetery phase two. Um, as well as looking at Smart One Sixty Trail Design and Construction, um, two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand and thirty. Um, Buckley Park Master Plan Design and Renovations, um, in two thousand and twenty-six and two thousand and twenty-seven. So this is kind of a forward-looking outlook of what we intend to fund for parks, open space and trails within that two thousand and five sales tax. Looking at the two thousand and fifteen, um, similarly, we do have some projects that would be considered, um, an annual project. So we have the recreation facility improvements as well as the community forest, um, dollars there. Um, in two thousand and twenty-nine, they will look to do the Art Twenty-Ninth to Demon Bridge. Um, does say that it includes a bridge, that's two point seven. Um, Durango Mesa Park in two thousand and twenty-six and twenty-seven is looking at a, uh, disc golf and a dog park. Um, Lake Night Horse, a wave. I need help with that word, Kelly. Attenuation?
Attenuation.
Okay, sounds cool. Um, so that one is in there for two thousand and twenty-eight, or I'm sorry, yeah, two thousand and twenty-eight. Um, then we, within multimodal, five point five million and twenty-eight for downtown access Camino Del Rio to the MS River Trail, Midtown Safety Connect, West Park Avenue Fast Binder, Thirty Second Street Traffic Calming in two thousand and twenty-six. And then the ADA Transition Plan Project Design and ADA Transition Project Construction. So you can see some of those forward-looking projects in the two thousand and fifteen Parks and Multimodal Fund. In the two thousand and nineteen sales tax, um, quite a few projects here. Um, these in nature, with the exception of the alleyway reconstruction, sidewalk improvements and bridge repairs. Um, a lot of these projects, um, a crack seal, annual seal coat, the open grade fiction, uh, friction course asphalt mill and overlay, pavement preservation. Um, a lot of those projects are what we would again consider kind of an annual project um, related to the ongoing maintenance or replacement of a specific section. Um, some projects that would be more like considered either a new project or, um, a continuation of maybe spending a couple of years uh, would be the Trick Two Thousand and Thirty, so Sonic to Ewing Mesa, uh, Main Avenue, six hundred, seven hundred blocks, pavement only. Um, the seven hundred and eight hundred blocks to install storm drainage and drainage piping and pavement. Uh, as well as the asset test master plan, street sidewalks assets, that PCI, um, index in sales taxes, we kind of look forward. We have, um, some additional tank, um, looking at those phasing. Um, so tank strikes, um, I think some of the bigger ones to note on water is that in two thousand and twenty-six, we are showing a total of fifteen point six million dollars. Um, I know that Bob Lowery and his team has really been working to put forth, um, all of our assets, um, and the replacement and maintenance of those. Um, as we have some age, some, um, critical. So, um, you will also see some projects, um, when we're looking at some replacement programs, waterline rehab. The, and some of those that are much more of a, um, annual projects with that recurring maintenance and replacement, um, but wanted to be able to provide just that total listing out for council. Uh, balanced, um, so just wanted to kind of give the full list for council as we're looking at those out here since we're doing the budget at a one-time interim basis. And sewer, um, we do have that annual station replacement. So that one would again be considered a ongoing maintenance, uh, related to Florida Road at Chapman's. So that taking that from a six inch to a twelve inch, um, pipe. Um, we have the main avenue sewer line of the six hundred and seven hundred blocks, um, consistent with what we were presenting at water. So you can see that those projects, uh, with the changes made in C I C M are, um, looking at replacing, repairing, um, in conjunction with each other. So, um, I think that's a a good point to note there as well with the street. So if we're going to be tearing up the street, we'll be looking at the water and sewer lines as well as the street replacement there. So there's a good coordinated effort, uh, as we're looking at some of these funds holistically. Um, and then, uh, again, some of those relining projects, um, replacement of pipe rehab. All of those are, um, an annual type of maintenance, uh, project as we continue through. And our airport, I have a fund where those annual projects are typically related to ongoing maintenance are not as present in the airport fund. Um, looking at some of those larger dollar ones in twenty-six, we do have a terminal expansion phase one B. Um, and then through the out years, you can see, um, you know, some of those costs. While there are a lot of projects on there are not as, um, large as that phase one B project is, so. And then with that, I'm going to take us into our fund summaries unless council has any questions on those five-year CIPs.
Questions from council?
Okay, great. For this one, I might have to go up there, um, because we're going to do this a little bit differently as I mentioned. So there's two ways to look at this information. I'm going to pull it up with our online Open Gov, um, ability. So hopefully, when I click, hopefully it'll still share that screen, looking at the oven. Cool, great. Um, also, the page number that is referenced there is the page number that's in your budget book for council. Um, the reason why we made this pivot is, as I explained earlier, we're putting those Excel spreadsheets up on a PowerPoint screen. Um, they get really difficult to read and that plot becomes about size eight. So we thought this might be a better approach as we're, um, looking at the budget. Um, and back to, um, councillor Yufi's point, this is really where we're going to kind of dive into the total fund summary. Now that you've heard from all the departments, you've heard all of the things that we've done in twenty-four, what we look to accomplish in twenty-five and and how that all kind of comes together in these fund summaries presentations. So, um, I'm going to, um, the fund structure and summary, so that's really taking council and the public through what each one of those funds are for. Um, so I'm gonna skip over that one just for the, um, sake of time.
Is this in our book?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So those page numbers that are listed there.
Yeah.
Um, that is directly to your.
Even is this, um, outline?
Yes.
That's what.
And it should be in your book on page, there is a wonderful fun sign. I don't have the page number just off the top of my head. But there is one that just talks about all the different funds. So on your book.
Is is this in the agenda packet that I'll live under?
Yeah, so we did make sure that we PDFed that those links work so that, um, anyone, if anybody wanted to click on those. Thank you. Oh, thank you. So, starting off here, we are looking at our fund balance changes. Hopefully this works again. Always trying something new. So this is our entire estimated fund balance changes as we're looking at the, um, total information for the city of Durango. Um, again, this is starting on page fifty-eight for council. So, um, you can see in alphabetical order that with our operating funds, we have our beginning fund balance. So this is where we expect to end two thousand and twenty-four. We have the revenues that were included, which also includes our transfers in, our total revenues, our expenditures, our transfers out, our total expenditures, net, um, net revenue, and then that ending, uh, fund balances there. So, um, as council can see, and I will go through each one of these funds, I'm not going to spend too too much time on this particular, um, overview, um, as each fund has separate revenues, expenses and fund balances. So, um, just wanted to highlight that this is available, um, and this is within our online budget book as well, as well as on the PDF. So, um, a couple of different ways for, um, council and the public to be able to review some of these areas.
Can I ask a short question on this?
Sure.
Can you show me in this or the online version, what total fund balance is? Where can I find it? The total fund balance, the starting fund for citywide?
The starting, um, here. So the, each one of these is your beginning fund balance?
No, no, the total amount, like.
Total amount for the city.
What is the starting fund balance citywide?
Sure. Um, in this format, we don't have the totals on here.
You can just add all those up.
Yeah.
With the calculator.
Yeah, and we could. Yeah, and we could certainly add, um, it wouldn't be much if that's helpful for council, we could certainly add what those totals dollar figures are for each one of those areas, no problem, and include that as part of the adaptive budget, part of our consolation presentation.
Hmm, thank you.
Yes. All right, so I'm gonna hop back to here. And I take counsel through the general fund summary. So, um, this is where councillor Yusup was asking for the information that talks about some of the more of those historical trends. Where we have the twenty three, the twenty four amended, twenty twenty four estimate, the twenty five budget. Um, for our revenues, um, we are looking at a four point five percent increase over our twenty four estimate. Um, in our revenues and in our expenditures, um, we are showing about a four percent on average. If we take all of our departments here and look at that, it's about four percent, um, higher. Um, I think a big component to note here is that as we are looking at our ending fund balance for, um, twenty twenty four. Um, that is within the twenty five percent fund balance recommend or requirement that council previously adopted with our fund balance policy for the general fund, so we are at that twenty five percent. So what that means is that the opportunity reserve that historically was available, um, went towards those projects that council implemented in twenty twenty three. And so, um, this is really kind of that big change right here. Our beginning fund balance started at that twenty three point one million. We spent six point eight million, um, and here we are at the sixteen point two. So, um, I think it's important to note that, uh, we are at that twenty five percent fund balance, which is why we are looking at having very efficient, effective operations in twenty twenty four.
It's a general fund.
Okay, yep, general fund. So moving on to our two thousand five debt capital fund, um, this is for the payments to, um, Florida Road and the library. Um, I think it's important to note that the library will be paid off in twenty twenty five. So, um, this is that sales tax, um, the quarter cent of the O five that is collecting sales tax for those specific, um, debt payments. Here. Two thousand five parks open space trails fund summary. Um, so again, these revenues are going to mirror what was just previously presented. Um, and in here, council can see some of those projects, um, at that summary level that we took councils through the very project specifics at the study session. Um, I think one item to note here is that, um, we are projecting a ending fund balance for twenty twenty four seventy six thousand three hundred fourteen. Um, but it is important to note that with any of these projects that are at a capital phase, um, so they either have to be at a nine, they have to be at a ninety percent design to be included for capital in this budget. So that was a big shift that we made in the twenty twenty five budget. Um, so if the project is not at a ninety percent design, it cannot be used for construction or considered shovel ready. The intent there is to bring less, um, budget amendments to council for projects with that ninety percent design we're able to forecast. And we have a better, um, construction cost estimate at that time. In addition, any of these projects that are in here for construction, we do have a ten percent contingency. So with that ten percent contingency, the intent is, um, again, not to have to continue to return to council to say, hey, we, you know, we're we didn't, we didn't have a contingency in here, and so now, you know, we had the scope change and we need this project amendment for the budget. So while that seventy six thousand three hundred fourteen thousand might seem a little bit low. Um, as staff, we are comfortable with that because of the ten percent contingency that we have for construction. I'll pause for a second, go ahead.
I appreciate that, but I think your beer contingency is the track record that we small portion is completed historically. So you'll have a way larger margin of, uh, money available, amount of money available than the contingency in each project. Um, I, you mentioned ninety percent or ninety nine percent in, uh, design.
It's gonna be a ninety percent for design, yes.
But a lot of these projects are design projects, so the majority, I would say, more than half is, how does that tie in or is that just?
So that, thank you, councillor Watson, for that. That is a good, um, point of verification too. Uh, we did shift to breaking out projects to show whether it was design or construction. Historically, we would have a project, I could, we could pick, I'll pick on Drago Mesa Park design. Um, historically, we might have said, here's the full project, not broken out the design components. So now what we're doing is just budgeting for design. Once that design has hit that ninety percent and we know what construction costs are going to be, that'll come back to council by way of the annual budget process for as an amendment that says, hey, now we're ready to do construction, uh, can be at this funding for that particular project. So I think that's a good point to note. Thank you for bringing that up.
And, and tied into that, because I, I asked that last year, maybe even the year before, during the budget process. And I'll start with another question though. Where can I find the total amount of capital projects that you are budgeting for in twenty twenty five? I know you can break it down and add it up with a calculator, but is there any place in this budget that gives me the high level view? This is how many capital projects we are going to do.
We can do that in Open Gov and the transparency portal really at any time.
That's why, that's why I was bringing up Open Gov.
Yeah, well, the reason I bring it up is we're looking at a budget, twenty twenty five budget document. And we should have what you mentioned, the high level totals and totals and just have a big picture view. And then we can, because the smaller projects can be changed, uh, by staff anyway. And so if, could that be added to the somewhere that it's, this is the total amount of capital projects?
Sure.
And then going back to what I said first is, I had asked last year or the year before, also to have visibility in how many projects are consulting based versus how many projects are actual construction and physical projects. And to have that somehow visible on the whole citywide amount, not for individual, uh, funds or funding sources. So if you have a hundred projects, my guess will be that a large, large portion will be consulting and design projects. And a very small number of projects will be actual physical projects. But the physical project will be a higher value. So their construction versus designing consulting will be typically the lower. But to have some side, some sort of big picture overview of that aspect, is that possible? I asked it last year, didn't happen, but is it possible for this, this budget?
So your question is, you want to see design? Total city design projects?
I, I would like to have basically a couple of numbers. If you have the total number of capital projects, that would be whatever, last year it was a hundred million. And then to be able to say, oh, that hundred million, twenty projects are physical projects, actual projects, and eighty projects are consultants, design and so on. And then associated with that, a number of dollar amounts, is the hundred million, is it eighty million in actual physical projects? And twenty million to consultants? Or is it fifty fifty? Because I, I know I, I've studied this in quite a bit of detail. So I, I know what the percentages will be and what order of magnitude. It would be interesting to have it from staff so that everybody has an objective, factual number.
On this one, it's, uh, putting on a new agenda item and see if you can get support from council.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of.
We can't do individual things for every council member. I mean, also will be inundated of how each individual councillor wants to see the information. So we provide it this way. And then if you want to change how that looks, it takes the direction of the body of the council to say, yes, this is the way we want to see it, or no, it's not the way we want to see it. So if you want these specific changes that seem to be tailored for your individual, uh, portion, then bring it up on the council agenda or any business, ask the council if their support, and if their support from the majority will absolutely do so.
I, it all depends on how much time it takes. So if, to me, a professional budget would have a total fund balance, uh, it would have a total amount of capital projects. And the only change would be how I, how it gets presented. If you have a list of projects or a number, if you number them, projects, one, two, three.
Okay. Is there an insinuation that this is an unprofessional budget?
First of all, I'm going to stop right here. The, the fact that you said a professional budget would have it, we have, we're GFOA, all the things, we have awards, it's a professional budget. We're not, uh, we're, that's not actually accurate, nor is it professional for you to say that to our staff. Two, I can look here right now and I can see which ones are designed and which ones are construction. And I can take a calculator and I can add up which ones are designed and which ones are construction. And every project has, as you know, since you're an engineer and you do this, um, every project has design that's included with it. I mean, every project I did when I was with Oakland Construction, we had design with, we had engineering, we had consulting with, right? So every project has a component of that, correct? Every project you've ever done, I'm sure, has a component of. It's not about me speaking, it's about you being unprofessional to our staff, and that's not okay. It's a very professional budget. We have plenty of words that say so. Just because you don't agree with it doesn't mean it's not professional. All right, let's move on.
Okay, so we'll dive into our airport operating capital fund summary projections. Um, I think some areas to note here, you can see that the parking lot, um, fees are showing a increase, uh, in there as well. Um, as the terminal rental airlines, um, so if we're looking at some of those total numbers around the revenues for the airport, uh, looking at about seven point three, uh, million in operating revenues. Um, as we come down and we look at some of the areas around airport administration, um, airport maintenance, utilities and that non-departmental. Um, that non-departmental does have to do, um, with the twenty six million dollar prepayment there as well. Um, so showing, um, healthy, um, ending fund balance for operating, um, as we come through our capital summary, uh, and you can see probably the largest, uh, changes here. Um, we do again have some of those federal aviation administration grants. Uh, we do have the six million dollars in twenty five for the loan proceeds. Um, so showing nineteen point three million dollars in revenues. Um, we do have the massive twenty six million dollar phase one B. I think it's important to note that this will be one of those projects, um, that you'll see as a continuation. Um, for our purchasing and, uh, per state law, we do need to show the whole amount for the budget um, so that we're able to contract the project, uh, but that will be a project that spans multiple years. So, um, wanted to highlight that on here as well. Uh, when we come down and we look at those total expenditures, uh, we are looking at about thirty point six million in, uh, total of capital. And then, um, you can see we do have that six point three, this will likely be a reconciling item, um, so that we're not showing the capital fund balance at a negative. Um, but as we are coming through here, um, you can see that nine point seven is what we're showing for the combined ending fund balances for the airport. So, uh, we'll likely have that reconciling item at reconciliation for council. So again, these two, um, funds, the construction fund doesn't exist without the operating fund. Um, we show them in operating capital and then combined, um, for the presentation here. But any questions on airport?
Any councillor questions on airport? All right.
Thank you.
Transportation fund, um, so we did chat a little bit, um, earlier on just about us where we're kind of looking, moving forward with the transportation fund. Um, you can see right off the bat, that fifty three eleven does show, um, nine hundred and sixty two thousand dollars in revenue versus about one point six in twenty twenty four, um, parking revenue, we do have, um, showing flat. Um, and then, uh, you can see through here, um, one, I think, item to note is that we do expect interest to not be as aggressive as it was in twenty twenty three. That obviously has to do with, um, the higher level federal changes, but you'll see that throughout, um, this budget that we are projecting that interest to be um, a little bit, um, more flatlined than it was in twenty twenty three actuals. Um, so total transportation revenues, we have a five point one million. Um, when we're looking at the expenditures, uh, for the operations, uh, we do show a six point eight million dollars total for the transportation fund, uh, with an ending fund balance of two hundred and seventeen thousand. So, um, again, um, the airport fund does have some combined fund balances. And so we are showing, uh, thirty five thousand seven thirteen for an ending fund balance. Um, when we're looking at the combination of the construction funds, um, we again expect, um, if that real estate transaction is to be pursued, then that would obviously create, push off that clip effect and stabilize the transit fund for a few years while we identify, um, different alternatives of revenues there. Any questions on transportation?
Anyone? Excellent.
In our trash and recycle fund, um, we are showing a small increase in our, um, commercial, um, refuse charges in our revenues. Um, the rest of the revenues that you're seeing on here are, uh, pretty, pretty flat. Um, with a total of three point four million dollars for twenty twenty five in revenues. Um, looking at the operating expenditures, um, we are showing a total of three point nine million, um, which is a little bit less than, um, what we had in twenty twenty four. Um, coming down to and looking at our different fund balances. So if we take that ending combined fund balance, we are showing that to be at four point nine million, um, with a change of, uh, four hundred and seventy one thousand at the end of that fund balance. Um, in the next few years, um, we will potentially be looking at a baler replacement as part of, um, that growing fund balance that is an expensive piece of equipment to replace. Our, um, facility or our fleet team has been instrumental in keeping that, uh, piece of equipment going, and they've done some replacements in twenty four, um, that we expect to push that out in a few years. But when that does come to fruition, it will be an expensive replacement for the trash and recycle fund. Any questions on this one?
Any questions, council?
Moving right along to our sewer fund. So in our sewer fund, uh, we are showing eight point seven million dollars in revenues. Um, again, pretty, um, flat compared to what we were looking at for twenty twenty four. Um, in our expenditures, uh, we are showing eight point four million dollars, um, as part of the expenses for sewer. Um, as we come down and we look at our capital, um, I think the, uh, projects throughout here, um, were discussed at the C I P, uh, study session in September. Um, but we do have a few projects that we are looking, um, to fund in twenty twenty five. We come down, um, this will also be a reconciling item where we're increasing that transfer so that we're not showing that negative fund balance in the sewer capital fund. Um, with a ending fund balance of four point eight million dollars projected for twenty twenty five in our sewer fund. Questions on sewer? Water fund? So our water fund, we are showing, um, seven point two million dollars in our revenues. Um, again, small increases, uh, with our commercial and residential, um, and that is just based on that forecasted information. Um, planned investment fees were showing to be, um, pretty close to what we had in twenty twenty four. As we come down into our expenditures, um, you can see that for our total operating expense, we are showing a six point six. That large eleven point seven million in non-departmental is related to our transfer of capital projects. Um, so a lot of capital projects being, um, completed in twenty twenty five. Um, so as we come into here, you can see that we have that revenue transfer over from the operating fund to capital of ten point four. Uh, we do have that large, um, three M tank replacement of six point three million dollars in twenty twenty five. Um, as kind of the, the largest project looking to be funded by water. As we come down, um, we are showing about seven point eight million dollars in an ending combined fund balance for our water fund. Any questions on water?
Council?
Yeah, I have a question. I, I listened to the meeting. I wasn't there when, uh, the capital projects were, were discussed. And I have a specific question on the, um, College Mesa Water Treatment Plant Train One. Uh, it's on that page, um, design. Uh, which I think was to bring it up to twenty one million gallons capacity. I, I was wondering, uh, I cannot remember a meeting where we discussed in, increasing capacity of College Mesa Water Treatment Plant, especially because it's tied to the approach that the city will take on Lake Night Horse Water. And so my, I'll ask the question in the vision. There's, this is designed only, is this the total cost for design or is there more for design in the following years? And then what is, if the design is approved, what is the cost? Or do we have any indication of cost for the improvements?
Might need some assistance.
Or just going.
On this one.
Sorry for putting you on the spot, I.
I can't give you a firm answer because I don't have the data. Uh, I know that the water plant's seventy years old, uh, and it, it is uh showing signs of wear and tear. I know there's been past discussions about a second plant, uh, don't know where that's headed right now. But I'll get the information for you and get into you ASAP.
Well, and, and the reason I think is important is because we have it in the budget, in the proposed budget, it includes a line item for the design. And the approach, first of all, with the current system is not clear, nor with late night horse, it's not clear. And it's not clear what the total cost could be because that may play a role in the direction that council, which is to move forward with. Uh, reliability of the water supply. So I, I'll just bring that out there because that will be a question I, I'll bring up multiple times more.
Moving on.
Okay, um, in our building maintenance fund, um, there is obviously a bit of difference with the energy performance contract project. Um, insulation and completion in twenty twenty four, um, so what we're showing from the transfers from the other funds is those contributions to the energy. Payment expenditures is related to the energy performance lease amount. Um, so we are showing a ending fund balance there of one point three million. Um, any questions on building maintenance?
Any questions, council?
Our general services fund, um, we are showing our revenues at. Two hundred and twenty seven thousand, um, this fund does support uh fleet water and it's kind of uh facilitates the warehouse functionality. For the city, um, that includes if the developer needs to go and get a water meter or anything of that nature, for example, uh, for one of their. Private developments, they're able to do that, um, and this is showing forty one thousand dollar fund balance, um. So just wanted to show that component, but any questions on general services? In our risk fund, um, we are showing here that. Um, this will end up being a reconciling item, I think Bonnie touched on it and I may have as well, but we are looking to shop our property casualty insurance. Um, for all of our buildings and our vehicles, um, to determine whether or not we should. Switch partners, um, depending on if they're able to provide the same level of services, um, and what those costs would be, so the risk management fund. Will be a reconciling item for um council to consider at our November meeting, um. Did also want to note too that uh when we were able to shop that workers compensation, as Bonnie mentioned, we were able to save two hundred thousand dollars by switching. Our carriers there without any reduction to services, and so I think that's a really critical piece as we look at risk management. Um, this fund is um funded by um the different. Either the general fund or the enterprise funds, depending on where the building or the vehicle lives or where the employee is housed under, so. Um, I think that's a good point of clarification as we're looking at one of the internal service funds there, but. Um, this will be an item that comes back for reconciliation as long as we have that information back from our carrier. Any questions on risk? Yes?
Okay, so I'm wondering. Okay, so you're looking at these general insurance policies because the rates increased or you just do this every? Year to see if you can get a better policy?
So we actually haven't, we've been with um SIRSA for decades. Probably. SIRSA was the company that had our workers' compensation, um, we were able to get. Um, so we thought it would be advantageous for us to look at our property casualty insurance as well. Um, and determine whether or not that would also be advantageous for us to switch, um. Some other areas um that we do look at is what our deductible is for some of those claims, not should be shipped our deductible, should be not. Um, very, you know, similar to how I might shop for car insurance or homeowner's insurance, for example, um, just. Trying to look at what level of liability the city wants to take on. Um, I think some other important pieces that the risk management team has done is just those training highlights that Bonnie mentioned, um, obviously if our. Teams are better trained, then we should have reductions in accidents or we should have reductions in, um. You know, just best protocols, so we're not increasing work and compensation claims or any of those property casualty claims, so.
The short answer is yes, Mayor Proton, uh, because we were getting constant increases, uh, we thought it was a opportunity to ensure that we were getting the best rate we possibly can.
And we do follow the same type of claim, is that they have a bunch of hail in the front range, for example, that. Does trickle down to this direction, but we are certainly shopping to see what options we have. So insurance fund, um, so we are showing our revenues, um, at nine million. Um, so which is a little bit of a decrease from twenty twenty four, that we're looking at our uh medical claims and our premiums. Um, we are not showing any increases in either of those areas. Um, part of the consumer health series as well as the changes we've made with our wellness programs, um. Uh, we're showing some positive um decreases there. Um, and this is the piece where we wanted to highlight, um, that we are showing an ending fund balance of four million dollars. What that allows us to do is in the event if we were to shop carriers, um. They would expect us to have. To be able to cover our claims, since we are self insured, the city does cover everything up to a hundred thousand dollars, but I think it's important to note that, um. You know, this wasn't auto filing and we have by switching to the per employee per month. But. Methodology, we have been able to stabilize the self insurance fund, um, and mitigate our risk in this area, so. Okay, on your. Um, this fund is for the replacement. For um all of our technology equipment, so you can see those services provided to the general fund that is based on. Um, where, um, as we are coming down here, um, you can see the revenues are a little bit less, but pretty flat, uh, computer supplies, you can see. Um, that is what we are showing. As a replacement and then we have that ending. Forty nine thousand, what that does is that, um, is the payments for future years to. When this fund was set up, I think we had some computers that were maybe. Years old, we adjusted, um, which does set us up for some uh security risks, um, operating on a device that ancient, so. Any questions on technology replacement? Any questions?
This is more, but this. Uh, funded by the. Fund, is it, or is it, I'm mixing it up here?
Who's it?
Their fund had two additional funds where they sure fund.
Who's building maintenance and technology?
Technology, but it's not. Technology replacement, this is the.
It was uh building, maintenance and technology.
So this is the funds that started. Okay.
Yeah, so the one I, the building.
Okay.
Vehicle Equipment Service Fund. And our B E S fund, I mentioned that I'm very proud of our. Fleet team. Vehicles in twenty twenty four, um, this, what we're showing for. Mentioned that that shop rate was increased, um. To cover. Um, you can see of twenty twenty five, everything's the biggest item in our peers that we are cleaning, replacing four point eight million dollars worth of our vehicles and equipment. Um, while, uh, which is, um. With that, you can also see that our total expenditures we're showing are seven point nine and we are showing an ending. So two thousand fifteen personal multi-modal.
If we can, just as we start these ones, can you just uh make sure for the council which ones uh of, you know, expenses?
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely, so recommended by Fab, the two thousand fifteen.
So it'd be the two thousand fifteen, two thousand nine, two thousand five, two thousand nineteen, water and sewer funds?
Yes, okay. Yep, um, so for the two thousand five, this is our parks and multi-modal projects, um, I'm gonna. Here, and so. You can see some of the projects, we did go over in great detail each in September, um, and so we are dollars. Um, in the two thousand fifteen, again, these do have that ten percent contingency on each one of the capital projects, they're either at ninety percent designed to be a construction or they are in a design phase. Um, any questions on the fifteen? Two thousand eighteen, um, began with recommended by. Some of those projects in there, some of the. Fifty, College Drive. This is one is showing a. Um, the reason for that being has to do with. Needs to be at that ninety percent decline or it has to be uh trouble right, or sure. So. Be available for future years. Um, to be. Any questions?
Quickly on the, excuse me, two fifty two thirty one, um, if I remember right, the county said that their max was gonna be twenty five budget, three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, whatever it is, that's what our.
Yeah, so. It's a split.
There was. Recent stuff is here, uh, again to include that contingency. Um, for that project, which is a standard. Uh, you do see a little bit of an increase from like forty twenty five.
Now, one. Once again, the E T S A funding, um, that is shared between the. Center. Um, it is. Share. We will be facilitating that, um, we've always facilitated it, but the difference, so the council is able to see, um, what is E T S A funded. A lot of our I T the nature, um, and so that funding request will go before the E T S A board tomorrow. Um, and, uh, but we are excited for the partnership that we leverage with the police department to go ahead and bring those into our coffers while maintaining the, the good relationship. To disperse their funds as well, so, um, just a change for council. Questions by nine one ones?
Uh, just a one update for the council, um, and probably as you all know, when nine one one communications fund was started, uh, we were really, well, partner agencies was really pretty much just a handshake agreement. Uh, but thanks to the hard work of Katie, Zeta, Mark and Bob, we've been able to get client service agreements with all of our partner agencies. Uh, so we actually have formalized agreements of what the funding structure looks like, the services we're going to provide, uh, we do need to co-own the building and land, so we want to get that. Art situated, but uh outside of that, D F P D, our fire districts, uh, Bayfield. Uh, for Lewis College, we all have a client service agreement with them now, so that was something we've been trying to get done for several years, uh, and been able to push that through the uh, the goal line is a, a great team effort. The administration fee is something that we keep just for kind of heading up all of that facilitation. H R, we have finance costs, uh, Bob's costing, helping manage those parts, and so that helps us, uh.
Creators for fabricers call volume, so, um, they can treat you based on how much you use the agency, so.
Well, I have one question, I don't know if he cancels. Is there any way to come up with a cost per call to nine one one?
Charging user agencies, cost per call is one of them, um, is there, is there a reason you ask that, or?
I just want it just for my own information. So like ten dollars or a hundred or?
So Bob is saying it's about thirty dollars, it's based on the numbers, I think average, I mean.
I'm just curious.
In the conservation trust fund, um, this is our state lottery proceeds, so, um, we collect the revenues and then Parks and Recreation will look for. Different um capital projects or maintenance projects that fit within what those dollars are used for, so we do have a five hundred thousand dollar transfer. Um, to a specific project that was identified by Parks and Recreation, uh, ending the balance nine hundred and sixty thousand, depending on. This receipt, so. One of our smaller funds, um, during a renewal partnership, um, one item to highlight here is that you're seeing a little bit of an increase in that sales tax property gift. Um, this fund is utilized in working down by either Midtown, North King, North Main Gateway and the urban ring. We are showing a little bit less than what we had last year, um, at four hundred and eighty six thousand three, this fund is really set up to redeploy, um, those sales tax and those property tax tips that we receive back out into those different areas for regeneration. And different urban renewal projects, um, so that five thousand. Fund balance isn't an area of concern, um, when we're looking at this fund specifically. The grant fund, um. The grant fund, so reason for showing no activity for twenty twenty five, it's not because we don't have any grants, it's because we wait until we are able to do our quarter four reconciliation and then we'll bring any of those grants back to council for any grants that may continue or any new grants. I think council is aware that we'll bring budget appropriations forward for any council request or any grant requests that our department has identified throughout the year. But in order to have kind of that process, because we are looking at revenue and expense and the timing of which we receive those reimbursements can be different depending on the granting agency. We are just showing that we, that just activity until we're able to have those. So council will see those in the twenty twenty five amended budget as we break this forward throughout the year. Housing Innovation Fund, so probably the biggest change here that the council will see the American Rescue Plan Act funds, as Elliot mentioned, those will be spent down in twenty twenty four. Something that we need to spend down. We do, we are showing that they will be looking at doing a community development block grant in on a one point one million dollars. And the projects, you can see here that we are showing some projects to move forward. As we move through down here to the total expenditure that is a bit less than what we had in twenty twenty four. About three point seven million with an ending fund balance of two point nine. And as my French used to onboard and look at this fund. Certain that there
What number is that? It's like, I can't see that.
This one's here?
Yeah.
So for the affordable housing fee, we spring, is that the only one you wanted to know?
Yeah, and so that, is that one hundred and fifty thousand in the second column?
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars amended, we're showing three hundred thousand dollars for the affordable housing fee for revenue in twenty five.
The payment to
That would be down here and other contracted expenditures as that information as to where that RHA payment is coming out of.
Yeah. Is it on there currently or not?
It would be in the expenditures. We're just not exactly sure what line item specifically is it seventy five thousand?
But I think it went up to ninety one.
It's in there.
Yeah, it's in there.
Real quick, sorry. Does the fair share money go into that housing, formal housing fee? Where does that? Or is that going to go somewhere else?
So it's correlated to the fair share housing they forego. Before the building, okay.
Yeah, I think that even used to be called fair share.
And we do, the RHA payment is seventy three thousand eight hundred and it is budget included in the other contracted services this year.
Thank you. So larger tax fund, what we're showing here is a balance between the different termination proposals that you saw earlier with the exception of housing project. Based on staff's recommendation, this one will likely also be a reconciling item as my French is working through with those components. So we will to bring visitor center into the city of Virgo and some of those areas. So right now, we're just reflecting some of those areas. The good news is that we are showing an increase in larger tax for twenty five, especially for trains. Not more than the twenty percent that we're projecting the revenue to be expected. I'm going to fly through this park development fund. This is created for payment fee of lose of